Good morning. Turn my microphone on, sorry Susan. Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting, our regular meeting of May 23rd, 2023. If you can, will you please rise with us, pledge to our flag?
Supervisor Stoppard, could you please lead us? Thank you, Mr. Stoppard. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have anything from, to read out from closed session from the last meeting that was, you, okay. You announced it at the last meeting. Okay, so we will move on to staff announcements. Can I see Lisa has an announcement? And Judy? You guys want to fight for the first one?
I'm too fast, I got up here first. Good morning Chair Tofanelli, respected board members, members of the public. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Environmental Health Director. So I have one brief announcement for our Animal Services Department. Our next free rabies clinic and microchip clinic will be held on Saturday, June 10th. Dr. Kathy Gatlin is our veterinary doctor that will be attending the event, and we're looking forward to that. So we hope to see everybody there, and maybe there will be some chocolate at that event. Thank you.
Thank you Lisa.
Good morning Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. Today I am bringing to you some information on how we are trying to grow our internship program and work experience for our younger generation. So Admin came to HR with an idea of having student summer interns. And so in our collaboration, we reached out to Motherlode Job Training, and they have a work experience program for high school students, and already had students signed up for it. So we will be working with Motherlode Job Training, and we are getting eight students who will be able to start after June 19th, and they are both from Bret Hart and Calaveras. We are putting six of the students in public access TV to kind of help, help with doing videos around the campus, and we want to partner with them to do, we're working on a video of all the department heads so that we can use for recruiting and orientation, so that everybody knows what we do here at the county. And so six students will be at public access TV, and two will be at animal services. And so we are going to continue to grow the program. It does not have to end after summer's over. We can also do work experience after school. And so we are going to continue to work with departments so that we can place students in different departments, but we need to make sure that we have a good program there. Because the idea is for them to gain work experience, not just filing papers away and stuff like that. So we will grow the program, and we are very excited to get this started.
Yeah.
All right, Jamie, it was your idea, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered it.
All right, is there any questions?
Supervisor Garamendi.
Are these paid internships?
They are paid through Motherlode Job Training. They have a budget for youth work experience, so they will be paid through them.
Thank you.
Thank you Judy.
All right, thank you.
Stan, Mr. Internet.
Good morning, Stan Moore from IT. Good morning Chair, members of the board. And yes, I am here to speak about Internet. So, just a real quick update, wanted to let everyone know that we are continuing to make progress with the, with conceptual design that will ultimately lead towards develop, towards putting projects together so we can get shovels in the ground and get moving in the infrastructure. You may have heard, public may have heard, that the state is doing a series of broadband planning workshops throughout the state. There's one of those that is coming up next week on Tuesday in Toolumine County, and it is for surrounding, several surrounding counties. So this workshop, or these workshops, are really looking at beyond when we have the infrastructure in place, when we have broadband in place. What are the other things that we need to be doing in order to get the most value out of it? How are we taking care of our populations that perhaps don't have the right equipment, don't have the right knowledge? How can we get people trained and, and be working at that planning process at the same time that we're working on the infrastructure? Each one of these planning workshops is developing a series of potential strategies. Some of those strategies are going to be similar between areas of the state, but some may be unique to an area. So the state is doing a really fine job of reaching out to the public and the government and saying, what are the things that you are going to have that we need to be working towards? So board members, you're certainly welcome to attend. If you do have the time, if you want to attend, let me know, I'll make sure that we've got you on the, on the list of folks that are signed up. But we'll keep you advised as far as what comes out of that meeting as well. So, thank you.
Thank you Stan. Any other staff announcement Nancy?
Morning Board of Supervisors, Nancy Giddens, County Librarian, CEO Hitchcock and County Council. We had fun at the fair. I don't know if you did, but we were able to drive the bookmobile into the Tom Sawyer Exhibition Hall. That is where all the kids art and all the wonderful things that our children have made over the school year. So I believe we engaged with every child in Calaveras County. It was wonderful. While the children spun the wheel and waited to pick their prizes and books, we were able to engage with parents and tell them about our wonderful summer reading program and lunch at the library. It was fabulous. We just felt like we made so many contacts. So the summer reading program and lunch at the library will be going on through our library system from June 12th through July 21st. The summer reading program will have book packets for children aged zero to 18, preschool to high school, four packets with a free book and activities. And then if they come one more time through the library during that summer reading period, they can pick one more free book. The lunch at the library program, we are so excited because the legislature has made possible, made it possible for us to do grab and go for the whole summer. I don't know if you remember, last year, we had to pivot mid, midsummer, we gave grab and go for the first three weeks, and during those first three weeks, we gave away almost 2,100 lunches. The second three weeks, we had to do a program and food on site, because that's the real rule for school lunch, food has to be consumed on site. So we were able to offer a program a day in a different branch and took lunch to them. But during those three weeks, we only gave out 291 lunches. So that made us really unhappy, because we realized this is not the way we meet the food insecurity need of Calaveras County. So there were many, many advocates for this, for especially rural library systems and counties. So when I called Michael, being the food services guy in Amador, to make my arrangements for summer, because we were just going to do the program and eat on site, he said, "Oh no, the legislature changed the law, and for rural, you can do grab and go all summer." So I checked with the state library, and it's okay for us to do it too, so we quickly pivoted. Thank you for passing our MOU a few weeks ago, so we're on target to do that. We're going to be able to do it, grab and go lunch, those, those dates, June 12th through July 21st, 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. in San Andreas, Rowan Flat, West Point, Moak Hill, and this year we're adding Valley Springs and Angels Camp. So we're very, very excited that we can do that. We worked, we figured it out, how we could get the food out to those places in a reasonable time, bringing it all the way from Amador. With that restriction of bringing it from there, it's just not possible for us to get it to Copper and Murphy's and Arnold in time for a reasonable lunch delivery. For, so for those three places, for the, once, once a week during this six-week cycle, we will take lunch and the bookmobile, the bookmobile and lunch, one day a week corresponding to their storytime days. So that will be Tuesday in Murphy's, Wednesday in Arnold, and Thursday in Copper. So we'll try to work next summer to get one of those southern school districts to cooperate with us and help us with delivering lunch, but in the meantime, we're trying to serve all of our sites in that way. So again, all of our programs, June 12th through July 21st, and we're looking forward to a really exciting and active summer. Thank you.
Thank you Nancy. Any other staff announcements in the room? No, online? Do we have any online?
There is none online.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to recognition and acknowledgements. I have an announcement. The first proclamation listed, Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency. That proclamation will be done right before we do our regular agenda and go on to item 29, which has to do with Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency, receive a presentation from them. So we will go on to the proclamation, item number two. This is Adult Services Adopted Proclamation Recognizing June 2023 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Calaveras County, and I will turn it over to Supervisor Stoppard.
Thank you Chair Tofanelli. Whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Day began on June 15, 2006 by the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and World Health Organization of the United Nations, and whereas our, as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. And whereas ageism and social isolation are significant causes of elder abuse in the United States, and whereas in California, Adult Protective Services reports at least one in 10 adults aged 65 and over experienced elder abuse in a given year and within Calaveras County population of 45,205 people, plus or minus. 28% are considered seniors, and whereas Calaveras County recognizes that seniors have the right to be safe in their homes and communities and be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, and volunteers in our community. And whereas Calaveras County is committed to helping all individuals live longer and healthier lives, and whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Month is an opportunity for Calaveras County to promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older persons by raising community awareness. Would we have any? Thank you.
I wanted to let you finish.
Good morning Chair Tofanelli, members of the board. My name is Susan Gleason, and I am the Program Manager for the Adult Services Unit, and I have about two-thirds of my team here, because I really wanted to recognize them for the work that they do. You know, as stated in the proclamation, almost 30% of Calaveras County are considered seniors, and this amazing team, they work, you know, collectively, collaboratively to mitigate abuse, neglect, isolation, and loneliness, just to kind of name a few. From, you know, the APS and IHSS social workers, to the senior peer team, to the public authority, to the veterans team, to Public Guardian, they each play a vital role in helping not only the community, but working together collectively as a team to provide resources, connect one group to another group, you know, brainstorm, kind of see what we can do to kind of help our community. So, you know, I'm proud of the work that they do every single day, so I wanted them to be here. So I just want to thank you, because for me, this proclamation really recognizes the work that they do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Can you have them stand and say their name and have them stand up when you say their names?
They will love that.
My name is Kimberly Quinn, and I am a force of social worker and animal service.
Kyle Tom, APS.
J.C. Hudson, APS.
Kathy Hueson, APS.
Sandy Wells, Senior Pure.
Linda Melon, Senior Pure.
Kathy Lee, APS.
Thank you all very much for your work.
There's no public comment online.
Excellent. Well, we, we have to remind ourselves that, you know, when we, we talk about abuse, many people think of physical or, or mental abuse, but a lot of times with elders, it's, it's manipulation and taking from people that a lot of people don't notice. So we thank you for protecting people and their futures and everything too. With that, I'll bring it back to the board, and we'll consider a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. I'll second. A second by Mr. Hubbard. All those in favor?
Aye.
There would be no opposed, of course. Thank you very much. So now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras hereby proclaims June 2023 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the, in Calaveras County. We thank you all for your good work.
So we will move on to the next one, proclamation from Public Works, proclaiming the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 National Public Works Week in Calaveras County.
I'm going to say it again, I'm sorry Susan. Now we move on to item number three, third proclamation is from Public Works, a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 National Public Works Week in Calaveras County. And Supervisor Hubbard, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you Chair. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance and sustainable and resilient commun, to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the quality of life and well-being of the people of Calaveras. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, including road maintenance workers, mechanics, inspectors, project delivery staff, administrative staff, and employees at all level of government. These dedicated employees are responsible for maintaining, rebuilding, improving, and protecting our county's transportation infrastructure essential for our citizens. And whereas in the past year, the Calaveras County Department of Public Works has delivered many projects, including safety improvements, roadway resurfacing, and preservation, striping, signage, new bridges, disaster recovery from winter storms, snow removal, and lighting district maintenance. And whereas stewards of the public interest, the public, the Department of Public Works strives to build and maintain safe and efficient public infrastructure while protect, protecting natural resources in partnership with our community. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Calaveras County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. With that, I'll put it to public comment.
Good morning, Robert Pakenger, Department of Public Works. We're used to just working, taking care of our potholes and road maintenance and snow and storm damage, and going all over the county trying to take care of 680 miles of roads, 73 CSA roads, and we're not very good at shining the spotlight on ourselves in such a manner as, as this. We're just used to doing a lot of work in the background, and you could see, a lot of our road crew guys, you know, they're not here, they're out there in the field, they're working. We have our engineering group, our CIP group that's preparing our projects, the project managers, our administrative group here, and you normally don't see them. You see them in the background, or you, you know that the bills are getting paid and invoices are going out, but you don't see the people that are actually doing all that work. But it takes a pretty large team to handle all of this work. This year, we have a $34 million budget, and our department size is about 63 people. Forty about, I would say, most of those are in, you know, working out there in the field. So it's a small group, we're like the Marines, somewhat lean Marine fighting machine, but here we are. And, and it's, to me, for me, it's, it's the reason I could do my work is because of them. They, they're the ones that are actually doing all the detail, all the work, and I would like to thank them myself for the work that they do, and I know a lot of the public does appreciate the work they do. And thank you for the support that you've given us throughout the years.
Thank you Robert. Any other comment?
Chair McBride, fifth generation Calaveras County District Two. I'm going to tell you, I love our road crew. Those guys are amazing, they smile, they get you through as fast as they can. I never see anyone leaning on a shovel. So I mean, really, they're a fabulous group, and I just want to thank them.
Thank you Chair. Any other comment? Any comment online? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody would make a motion?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, something Robert said, you know, the guys out in the field are the ones you see that are trying to get you through, but with an organization like this, it takes everybody from top to bottom to make things work. You know, that, even if, even the person at the front counter, that, that takes, that takes in information or sets, puts out information to the public, it's all part of the machine when it comes to any public entity like that. So with that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, be it resolved, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and pays tribute to our Public Works employees and recognizes the substantial contributions they make to protecting our safety and quality of life.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of this board and is not posted on their consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is completed before 30 minutes, allotted time period, the board may immediately move on to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard. So, public comment.
Good morning, my name's Alex Sathwalker. I just wanted to read a little bit to pay tribute to some of our volunteers at Animal Services. Since the proclamation to honor the volunteers of Calaveras County Animals Shelter was rescheduled to next month, I thought it would be nice to show up today anyway, to honor them all for their continued time and dedication to the animals, because I know a lot of the volunteers were planning to be here today. I'd like to read some of their names, starting with the dog walkers. The woman who shows up almost every day and runs the whole show is Dolores Ransom, her husband Ed Ransom, Holly Croydon, Bobby and Bob Pyle, Patty and Don Payne, Janet Beechler, Uta and Jerry Peters, Sarah Corley, Jamie Lee, Jane Carter, Nancy Lear, Kathy Campbell, Joan Roefler. A huge thank you to Focus Volunteers, Christine Albertine, Debbie Buford, Michelle Cody, Kim DiArlaga, Jermaine Elliott, Melissa Hanray, Kathy Musio, and many others. I'd also like to thank Cynthia Pino for the cat volunteer, and the cat volunteers, and Michael Vescas, the manager of Animal Services for instituting the cat foster program. We look forward to a similar program for the dogs, which would greatly help the overcrowding situations until the new shelter is built. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Pamela D2. Several weeks ago, we received what is known as a Proposition 218 Notice of Public Hearing on Solid Waste Parcel Fees, raising our fees 85%. Proposition 218s were approved by California voters in 96. Establishing property-related fees is an incident of property ownership. The procedure for raising these fees included two steps, a public hearing at which property owners may lodge a protest and a ballot proceeding. Thus, the process requires public approval in two steps. A notice is mailed to each property owner, which we've now received, and a public hearing follows 45 days later. If a majority plus one protests the proposed fee in writing, the fee cannot be imposed. Note, this protest must have each person's APM written on a letter prior to or on June 27th here in Calaveras. We need a little over 50% of our Calaveras citizens from Copperopolis to Sheep Ranch, Murphy's to Valley Springs to protest this hike in solid waste fees, a hike of 85%. You heard that right. If you thought eggs were high a few months ago, wait until you open your tax bill with an increase from 150 to 227 for solid waste fees residential. Integrated Waste Management under the purview of Public Works has been operating in a deficit for years, and after kicking the can down the road, our Board of Supervisors decided to raise our fees. Even before they received a report from Gersham Brickner in Breton costing $180,000 to determine that fees increased $127 in order to pay for a landfill expansion, costing at a minimum $10 million. What were the other possibilities? Cutting hours, reducing shifts, raising fees incrementally? We don't know. We cannot even get an accurate idea of how much it costs to bury a ton of garbage, but by best estimates, our rate, our rate is the highest in the state of California, almost four times what other counties pay currently. This is a fee that trickles down, for businesses will pay more than 90%. If it's a grocery store, it may be more than eggs going up. For those who rent, this bill is for you, literally. The owner may hold the parcels fee for solid waste, but renters will see the increase. The owner may hold the parcels fee for solid waste, but renters will see the increase. For those on a fixed income, tighten your belt or vote no. Martin Hubbard has said, "It's a huge rite of passage to drive with your dad to the dump to get to know where your garbage goes." What a pastoral image of our county, Dad and I driving to the dump. He also noted that this curtails the illegal dumping that other counties deal with. Apparently, he has not driven around Railroad Flat, West Point, or Willseville. Another board member notes, "This is Calvares County's greatest asset, our landfill. Solid waste and cannabis is a huge draw here." So what can we do? Vote no. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Sanchez. I'm a citizen and taxpayer at Calvares County. I recently received this letter from the county on the solid waste parcel fee increase. I also have the letter from the Business of Cal Waste. From my understanding, this project has been in the works for about a year and a half. I understand that the solid waste facility has to expand for the growth in the county and that solid waste fees will increase over time. You, the Board of Supervisors, already voted to move forward on this proposition two months ago without notifying the property owners and business owners of the county. Now we, the taxpayers, are presented with this 85% increase on the solid waste fee. Prior to your vote, the taxpayers should have been notified by letter, the same way we were notified here, and involved in the preliminary meetings. And because since we are the ones that are paying for this project, why didn't the county start looking into adding another cell years ago and simply increase the solid waste fees incrementally over a five-to-eight-year period prior to the expansion? I believe that would have been more readily accepted by the taxpayers, who are now presented with this enormous increase all at once, creating a financial burden for some taxpayers. The way this proposition was presented to the taxpayers appears to lack transparency and public input. This letter from Cal Waste states that the solid waste division loses an average of $2.5 million every year. Sorry, it was this one. If a business operates in the red every year, why are you throwing more money at it? How do you explain that to the taxpayers? What was the purpose of the county to hire a consultant to evaluate and make recommendations about the operations and funding of the solid waste system when you, the Board of Supervisors, already voted to spend the $10 million prior to receiving the report from the consultant? The county also spent $1.1 million engineering, for engineering services, prior to the consultant's recommendations. In conclusion, knowing that the facility would need expansion, simple planning, years in advance, should have been the way to proceed. Number two, budgeting years in advance increases, increasing the fees incrementally over several years should have been the way to proceed. Number three, notifying the property owners and business owners, years in advance to be a part of this project should have been the way to proceed. As a result of not planning in advance, it has increased 85% that fee to the property owners. And for the commercial, the lesser of two times the current fee or $1,512 increase. Complete transparency with public participation.
Man, the time is up.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair and Senator. I have some papers for you. I'll give you mine, for your perusal. I'm also, I am also, as I said, fifth generation of this county, so of this county, this state, and this country. So to the County Board of Supervisors, I am a county resident, representative of the state of New California. We, the People Movement for the Preservation Republic, guaranteed to citizens by the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, by this letter, I am notifying all County Board of Supervisors today that they must first and foremost prioritize protecting our national security during our imminent future elections. It is imperative that we comply with implementation of security to protect the sovereign right of each eligible citizen to have an authentic outcome in casting a vote in the elections. Back in 2017, the United States Secretary of Homeland Security issued a statement clearly designating election infrastructure as critical infrastructure. Election infrastructure is critical infrastructure for the obvious reason that elections have a major impact on national security. It's vital that the state of California complies with that inherent intent from the federal government and works to ensure a system of cybersecurity and oversight is established within every political subdivision. Every components of the election systems used in our county must have safeguards in place to prevent any attacks which threaten our national security. Secure elections are a protected right for the eligible citizens incumbent on our representatives to exercise their authority to see that an electronic voting system in the county is used as the primary method for counting, tabulating, or verifying federal elections unless those systems meet necessary standards of protection. Federal government has made it very clear that election equipment is considered a target by those who want to threaten the safety and security of our country. Electronic voting systems that contain components that are made with parts produced in countries considered adversaries to the United States must never be used as the primary method for conducting our elections in our county, state, or country. CEO John Polis is predicting that dominant dominion will not survive from this in the 2024 elections due to the security of their systems, scrutiny of their equipment's vulnerabilities to hacking. More alarming is the components of their systems include embedded modems and circuitry on a motherboard the size of a pencil point that is made in China, nation-ledversorial to the United States, an obvious breach of the security to elections. March 29, 2023, President Joseph Biden declared a national emergency pursuant to the emergency emergency economics to deal with the unusual and extraordinary threat to the national security, foreign policy, and economy of the United States. I call upon, and continues, you can read that, I call upon each board member to do the right thing, follow your oath of office, and read about the doctrine of the Western magistrate, that gives you the power. That is your power to say, "We're going back." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there, oh, item's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. I'm here, Mary Beth Fox Patel, I'm here wearing my, um, directors for Calvares County Fair. And I just want to say, we had an incredible fair this year. It was so much fun. I got to see several of you out there, kissin' frogs, jumpin' frogs, fond our family. You guys buy the animals. It was incredible. We saw an uptick in numbers this year. And I just want to say that I'm so darn proud of this community for coming together. Our auction brought in $1.5 million back to these kiddos. It's incredible. And it just shows the strength of our community. It shows that the people that are here are here for all these kids and everything they do. And I'm just, again, I'm so darn proud. And I want to thank you guys for being out there. And your presence was definitely known. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have any online?
There is none online.
Nope, online public comments. We will move on to the next item. It's the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the Consent Agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member which pulled an item from the consent?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item number 25 and 26.
25 and 26. Any other board member? No? Is there any staff member which pulled an item? Anyone online?
There is no one online.
Okay. Is there any member of the public which pulled an item? Okay, nobody public, nobody online publicly?
Nobody online, no.
Okay, Supervisor Stopper, you have?
Item 19, please. Just, I just want some credit on.
Item number 19.
That's the, for emergency services.
Okay, so I'm open for a motion for the remainder of the items, other than item 19 and 25 and 26.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll start with the number 19. Supervisor Stopper, you pulled this item.
Yeah, it's not too in-depth, just, you know, reasoning on the change of the job description for OES, the Director of Emergency Services.
So the language that was added to the job description just gives clarity that we're able to look at years of experience, training, looking at their whole experience, not just education. So everything that would give them, give them the skills and abilities to do the job.
Okay.
It also allows us to have a larger candidate pool and, as well as internal candidates and external candidates.
I can understand that. In the past, we have looked at different situations and sometimes, you know, we can take a step too far when it, when it comes to opening up the pool because then it opens up potentially people that aren't necessarily qualified for the job, even if they do have experiences in other areas of the overall management. But not getting a complaint, I'm just, I'm just putting it on your radar. I don't have any complaint about this item, I just wanted clarity on it.
Right, and just to be really clear, they still have to have the skills and abilities identified to do this particular job. So they still have to be in the area and have experience within OES. They cannot just be an accountant who wants to be an OES director.
I can appreciate that. Thank you, Judy. I don't have any complaints on this item, I just wanted the clarity.
Chair, other question?
Yes, Supervisor Garimendi.
Mr. Sabrada, we faced this question before, specifically there was an item in Public Works where we stuck and we weren't, we didn't allow that. What is different between this position versus that position and why we make an exception for changing it on this one?
So specifically, the wording that we are suggesting we would like to see in most of our job descriptions that does not have a particular degree or licensure that prevents them from doing the job, either by state law, federal law, or county code. So it was the board's decision that they wanted an engineering degree specifically to that job description. And so that, that is a specific item that they have to have.
But you don't need a degree to be Director of OES.
So what happens and what we've seen the last time that we did the recruitment for this position is that we had those that have done this job for years, many, we had somebody with 15 years of experience but did not have the degree. But they had the, you know, the training, they had all of the certifications that required to do the job, but they had one little piece that was in the MCues and so they were not able to, to interview for the position. And so in these type of areas, a lot of times, we will have somebody that has worked up through a fire department and then became an OES director or other means of becoming an OES director without having the degree.
My concern comes because, you know, obviously, that's a board decision on what we want the requirements to be. I just, and we have reposted this? So we?
Yes.
Collected resumes and then we re-change the job description, now we're reposting?
Correct, it is still open.
Okay.
What was the pool the first time, if you don't mind me asking?
We had, I believe, seven and two did not meet the MCues.
And just, just so everyone knows, you know, I, I actually think that this, the existing job description, there was an implication that training and experience could take the place of education, but it wasn't totally clear. So I think this is just designed to make it, to give clarity.
And I would concur with Judy in the fact that, you know, with the Public Works position, most definitely, I feel that an engineering degree would be, apply to OES, little bit different than the Public Works, although, you know, education can apply. But, you know, sometimes you say, yeah, respect for the things I can do sometimes, Jack, and I don't have an education like you, so.
No, it's absolutely, but you have to be ad flexibly so you get the right people. If you need someone with a professional engineering stamp, we need someone professional. If you don't and you need a good manager, then we should take that into account for people who don't have that degree. And I hope we will extend that same flexibility to extend, to expand our pools for other jobs.
Yes, and in fact, I had recently talked with CEO Hitchcock on, we need to bring an item back and in job descriptions where this would be beneficial, we need to add that language to those job descriptions.
It's, it's a fine line. I mean, different, different, it depends on the job and everything else, so.
Correct.
I can appreciate you all looking into that.
All right, thank you.
Public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments in the room?
There's none online.
Not online? Bring it back to the board, open for a motion.
I will move this item.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Garimendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. We move on to item number 25. Supervisor Garimendi, you pulled this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to address both of them together since they're kind of part parcel. I know we have two separate items. Robert, we have $2.3 million designated in additional funds to go in, roughly, to go into these, to our consultants to continue the wagon wheel project. These funds are currently in the wagon wheel budget, designated for sort of wrapping up the project. Correct? They're already designated for tasks in the wagon wheel budget.
No, sir. The, what we have right now is that amount of money that has not been designated for environmental or other tasks. If we were to say we stop the project today, that would be money that we can use to wrap things up. As we move forward, we are wanting to proceed with these amendments to keep the projects going forward. Our intent is to keep those at, let's say, task order basis, month by month, controlling those funds so that they're not spent in its entirety or, you know, we would only spend maybe a month's worth of funds and then we determine whether or not the projects are going to keep going. If anything were to happen, we stop that at that point and the remaining funds are used to close the project up.
You said that, now, assuming that the project doesn't stop on a dime, in your item, it says that we would have to backfill these funds from a different source if we decided not to continue. So for example, if we contract with Duber and Doken to do this, the work that they have here, and let's say Caltrans stops, okay? We have a state budget going on, we have no commitment from Caltrans to continue this or finish this up safely. So if we commit this money, and it's, it's hard to imagine we wouldn't spend it, where would we backfill that money from? As you pointed, you, in the agenda item, mentions it, but doesn't say who's paying that backfill.
If we don't get any funds from the state, we would have to get those out of the rim funds.
Out of the rim funds.
Yes. But as time goes on, of course, right now, today, if we were to award this, these two contracts, expenditures are low. Of course, as time goes on, those expenditures continue to add up. But we have committed to coming back to the board to, at various milestones, to discuss with you whether or not we continue. And if there's some idea that we decide to stop, then these contracts will not be expended in their entirety, they'll stop right at that point. So there's going to be money left and that money that is left will be used for wrapping up the job if that's necessary.
When we spoke about this before, you had, I was, I was informed that Caltrans was going to step up.
That's correct.
And that has not happened to date. So we have no assurance that there's more money coming. My concern is, we're betting that Caltrans is going to come in and help finish this project at a time, we have no guarantee of that. I mentioned state budget and chaos going on in Sacramento. So we're really betting on the come with our rim funds that this will continue.
It's a little bit unfortunate that you haven't been able to see all of the communication and work that's going on with Caltrans. I could say to you that pretty much District 10 Headquarters is supportive of the extension. Caltrans Headquarters is supportive. We've been responding to questions that they have to determine the amount of funding and so forth. We've been successful in providing to them the information that they need. This morning, I believe that they have comfort with a certain amount of funding that they want to provide. And then- that they want to provide and then we'll move forward with that. So as far as Caltrans responding to you, I would expect that they respond to you here quickly with that sense of, to give you that sense of comfort that you're looking for.
Well, I have, I have a, you know, we, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. The last communication I got from District 10 was not committal at all on whether they were going to step up or where they were. So, you know, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm hearing what our consultants are saying. But you're asking us to gamble $2.3 million of RIM funds.
Right.
And that's what we're asking in essence. We're betting on the come. That Caltrans is going to come through and I don't have any comfort that that's going to happen. I mean, and we're at the 11th hour and 59 minutes. And that's, you can see my challenge.
Yes, yes.
But I feel like I'm getting jammed when I don't have commitment from Caltrans if they're going to step up.
I, I understand that, but as I said, on our, on our end, what we can do is control that expenditure so that that entire funding for the amendments isn't spent. If for some reason you make a decision here, let's say in June or so, that you've had enough, we'll stop right there and that exposure is, is contained.
So why can't, let me, let me finish. Why can't, why can't this wait to the next meeting when we have confirmation from Caltrans that they're going to step up? Why is this today and not a two weeks from now?
Because we need to continue the work out there. The longer that that work delays, there's also an increased expense to getting the work done and our schedule for this year is jeopardized.
Right. Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but that doesn't, I understand exactly the timeline and the challenges. I'm frustrated that this is the 11th hour and 59 minutes and we're out of money and we're asking to take the $2.3 million bet that we'll continue, be able to continue this project.
Well, right now, there is that money that has not been expended, so.
I understand that, but we, but we're going to have to spend that money no matter what, right? Wrapping this project up. Somebody, at some point, we wrap up the project, right? When it's done or something.
When it's done, if, if we can get, once we get our funding and it's done, the state will cover all the, all the expenses for wrapping all that up as part of the project.
Which would be great if we had, I understand that that's the state. I mean, I'd gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today, as a Wimpy used to say. And, you know, I believe you. I understand what it says. You have to understand my frustration. It's just not a bet that I personally am willing to make on behalf of the citizens of my district.
So currently, we're, we're still only using the state's funds. Even with these amendments, we're using the state's funds. The thing where we may come in is in a couple of months, if you decide we've had enough and we've had some expenditures on these amendments, we'd have to make up what we spent there with RIM, which wouldn't be the $2 million. It would be, you know, a small, a small portion of that.
So why don't we come back with a small portion for today and take it up again down the road? I'm just, I'm, I'm cautious in committing $2.3 million to consultants who haven't exactly kept this project on track. I mean, we're having this 11, that they're not going to spend the money and then we're going to get to the end and to wrap up the project, we're going to have to pick the pocket of RIM to finish this project off. I just, this is a, you're asking us to gamble, in my opinion.
Can I just talk just a second here? I know Supervisor Herbert, you have, you were marking the point on, I think, Mann and Mann at both conferences. Well, he's talking about wrapping up. He's saying that if we, if we just put an end to it, we have to pay the contractor to wrap everything up, move his, and he may have some things. He's saying, well, I could have been working another job. You know, I could have bid on other things going on. Not wrapping up at the end of the job. At the end of the job, if we go on and we finish this, there's no funds, he, the contractor's finished with the job. He goes off the side. He's done. So, so I think you need to designate that, that he's talking about. If we just pull off the project and stop right now, he's got to load up all of his equipment, his men and all this other stuff and tie up loose ends. That's where he's talking about the money would be spent on. The other thing is, this is not all Caltrans. This is CTC, California Transportation Commission, where a lot of these, and that's federal funds that are coming down too. And, and we were in the same position back in June of 2021 when Mann and I went before the CTC and asked for funds to fund this project. And, and we rewarded those funds and Caltrans was behind us at that time also. I feel pretty confident that not only the CTC, but Caltrans is not going to just walk away from this project. We're, we're not even nowhere near to being complete with it. And they're, they're replacing a bridge. They have a shop project out there, which would be in Phase 2, replace a bridge and, and they're committed and they're moving forward with that. They're not just going to replace this bridge and leave the highway the way it is. They're looking to, to move forward with it safely. I feel pretty confident. I understand where your concerns are and what you're talking about. But I think what, what Robert is saying is actually true that if we move forward on this, we're, we'll, he's talking about backfilling $2 million. That's, that's possibility we won't have if we do stop. We have the funds available. It wouldn't cost as much anything at all. It's, we'd have to backfill at some point and that's what we're looking for, Caltrans and CTC. Because of the situations that happened out there with cultural items that have been found, it was, it's, it's ate up a lot of the budget. And that's not what the, the, the consultants that we're talking about have control over. That, that's a different contractor. It has to do with cultural, that's finding all these items. And then there's laws. There's not only state laws, there's federal laws on how to handle that, what you need to do with it, teams that have to go out there and identify each object. That takes a lot of time and we weren't projecting that. We had no idea what we were going forward. We had some funds in there for it, but not at the level that we're talking about that's happening out there. It seems like every time they turn over a stone or move some dirt, they find an object. So.
I, Supervisor Sopper, I, I understand. I understand how that money will go down. Certainly, the cultural resources didn't ask to have a highway built through their graveyard. So, and they don't write the laws either. I understand where that comes from. I think that, my understanding is that, that Caltrans and the CTC, you're correct. Caltrans submits their proposal for roughly June 1 to go to the CTC. CTC produces their agenda items later than, later than roughly July 1 for their August 15th board meeting where this will be heard. So to date, Caltrans has not submitted their request towards the CTC. We certainly have not seen it to my knowledge. And so while we can look at August 15 for the CTC, there's a whole chain of events that need to happen. And I would just like to see Caltrans, I'd like to see Caltrans' commitment to this now before we put forward this 2.5 because you're right. If we commit this and we decide not to move forward because the CTC doesn't approve it in August or Caltrans doesn't submit it before the CTC meeting, we're still going to need that 2.3 to wrap things up.
So right now, behind the scenes practically daily, we've been providing Caltrans requested information and they've been working on trying to come up with those reports that you've been talking about to meet the beginning of June so that they could get the other thing in July and hit August. So all that's been working every day.
Okay. And I'm just saying, I'm not against wagon trail. I'm not against getting this done. I'm against betting on the come and gambling on the 11th hour. So that's, that's where I'm at. If I had a report right here, if I had Caltrans report to the CTC for application, then I'd feel comfortable. But I, all they have got is the county District 10 Director saying he'll take a look at it. So that's all I got.
Supervisor Sopper, you have something you want to say?
I'll, I'll hold my time.
Okay. Supervisor Folendor.
I'm just trying to think of how I'm going to, a little bit of history I think everybody needs to remember is that the county actually committed $7.5 million of RIM originally on this project. The majority of that money ended up supporting the Befire and repaving a lot of roads because of that. We still haven't seen that money come back, which was supposed to backfill the Highway 4 project. Not to any fault of staff or us. We are handcuffed with federal, our federal partners who have not gotten to those refunds. So the county gambled originally, when they wanted this project, $7.5 million of RIM. And that is what they set to commit when they wanted to take this project over. We, county knew going into this project they were going to be in major risk, but they still committed this. And on top of getting other funds, which Gay mentioned earlier, we went to CTC and were able to get federal dollars to offset those investments and commitments that the county gave. This is one of, not only our county priority, it is our federal priority where our lobbyists are working in DC to also get other funding with our partners, which is also going, going to FEMA to try and get these reimbursements. The more staff is working on that, and once we do get that money back from FEMA, when will be able to do all the other roads in this county as we start planning out with our CAP? But I think it's, it's a good reminder because most of this happened before. A lot of us were on this board with the county committed to. We took responsibility for the risk of the construction of this project. We took responsibility for ensuring that we are going to improve these roads with our partners. And this is also one of the major evacuation routes in the county, which the county is also in the middle of planning and working on with OES and other partners. And for us to stop, get a, to ourselves in the foot and stop a project because we're not willing to put the, put that risk, I, are we going to have another fire to remind us the importance of Highway 4? This is also a cultural investment for broadband. We've been working with Caltrans to ensure that, as Highway 4 is one of those sections of broadband investment, if we don't put ourselves out there to improve Highway 4, broadband is going to be lagging behind on that side of the county. They're, while they build the road, they are going to be putting the needed infrastructure in for us to take broadband up the highway from the county line. So this isn't just riding on just the risk of, of culture. There are other projects that are happening in this county that Highway 4 is supporting. And if we don't somehow work with our partners, help staff get, get where they need to be to keep this project moving, even if it, you know, little chunks at a time, we aren't going to see broadband. We are not going to see the evacuation route. And we are not going to see our, the tourism coming up and down that corridor, which we see hundreds of thousands of people every year that are bringing money into this county. So I think it's just more than just the wagon trail project. We are putting our bet on all of these other investments and it is tying and weaving everything together. I know being that it's in my district, I'm going to be strong on it, but this is a county priority. We all sat here and said this is what we want to do and it is no bragging. But staff is working diligently behind the scenes with Caltrans, CTC staff, and I have my faith that they are going to come through to get this money. And in a couple of weeks, we're going to have good news than we had a month ago. So I'll get off my soapbox and let somebody else talk. But I just want to remind us that it's more than just paving the, paving the road.
If I may, I want to clarify. The roads, Bfire roads were paved using Bfire settlement. Emergency response was, of course, during RIM, using RIM, and those have been being paid back. But the roads were not paved using RIM. They were used primarily, I don't want to say absolutes because money gets mixed, but the fact is, majority, most of that was done with Bfire settlement. I also am going to have to disagree on the, I don't think it's a big delay to the internet come up Highway 4. And I want to make very clear, I'm not against this project. I'm against doing this vote right now before we have clarity from Caltrans.
Supervisor Herbert?
Yes, I'd just like to ask you, Robert, why, I want to go back to what Supervisor Garimendi was asking is, why do you need all of this money approved now if in fact we'll have some sort of security by August?
We need to keep these cultural, the cultural work going. Our archaeology, archaeologist is ESA under the Duber contract, I'm sorry, under Doken contract. The Duber contract pays for the archaeologists. We could be coming back and bringing amendments back to you on a monthly basis if that's what you wish, but that, that is.
Do you need the full amount then, you're saying?
We just brought the full amendment amount to deal with that once and for all and, you know, not keep coming back to you every, every month. But that, that would be a, a staffing and, and time for you to be approving monthly amendments. But that is possible. I, I would say that's possible.
Supervisor Sopper?
I mean, overall, it's like an amount not to exceed, you know? There, there's a percentage for, for extra cost in there. Natural resources, I mean, we're dealing with all these villages that are popping up that, you know, state and federal laws are, our hands are tied and we should respect those, those areas as mu, as much as possible. That said, in most cases, I would agree with you. You know, incrementally coming forward is just going to cost us more, especially when it comes to staff time, our time, everyone's time. But when we're unsure when this money's coming forward, maybe just the amount to get us through till July 1 might have been a good idea.
We can still do that.
Yeah, and that, and that's, 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 that's what I'm saying. Because I'm trying, you know, I'm, I, I feel what Mr. Garimendi says. Because here's my point of view on the RIM funds, you know? Yes, we take responsibility, Ms. Folendor, for what other boards have done in the past fully. And we must implement it that way when we make agreements. A deal's a deal, whether I agree with a deal or not. We'll talk about one that was made when it comes to integrated waste later today. You know, but that board in 2015, 2016, I mean, I got all the names right here, made those two deals that, you know, are hard, hard to roll with, but we have to, you know? That's, those are your words, Jack. A deal's a deal, right? So, but those RIM funds, if we dedicate those and those end up costing, I don't get to use them in my district. Gary doesn't get to use them in his district. You know, Martin, his, you know? Highway 4 does benefit us all. It is a project that is huge. This, because of the cultural resources, this is extremely over budget. And yes, I do have my, I'm, I'm nervous about it, you know? Until that money's in hand, we can sit here all day and say, hey, everyone loves us. They're going to give it to us. But until that money's in my hand, I don't believe it. I won't believe it. You know, because let's stick to a different word, you know, not a four-wheeler. Stuff happens.
Yes.
Constantly, especially in the other industry I work in.
Right.
But, but that, that said, I, you know, I feel what Mr. Garimendi has to say. And I think right now, an incremental part will get, stage me enough to, so that we can get at least a four-fifths vote to get us through July 1 and then we can bring it back. Other than that, I would like to do the full now.
Any other board comments? See none? Open up the public. Is there any public comments on this item? Either one of these two items. We're doing 25 and 26 since they were consent. No public comments online?
No, there's not.
Okay, I will close the public comments and bring it back to the board. I just want to say that this, sitting on COG and being on COG for a decade, we, we, for a long time, and Robert, you, you know this, for, for a long time, we didn't have a good relationship with Caltrans. It was very broken up and it was very, this project, we got a good relationship with Caltrans and with CTC. And what the situation is here, their, their eyes are on us and how we perform and how we're going to do. This could affect future projects. It could affect future funding when we go before them for any other projects that we want to open up or try and do with federal funding and state funding. So this is critical and again, I want to point out, I, I don't know anything where Caltrans is just going to turn around and CTC and walk away from a project. That, that's not their way they operate. They, they started this. They've entrusted us to do this. They understand through the conversations I've had. They understand that the cultural, the, it's not, it's not the county itself that is, is not, or misusing the money or not funding this correctly or doing what we need to do. We moved along pretty good. We moved along pretty good, at a pretty good pace. They came out, they come out all the time and take tours. Caltrans has been out there a number of times, Marla and, and Grace has been out there a number of times and very impressed with how we're doing this. I, I just don't want it to affect future projects and get back into a relationship that's not a good relationship. Again, whatever the board decides to do today, we decide to do, whether we go part funding, full funding, or whatever, but I think we're still at a point where we're not, we've already committed this money, we're, we're, we're looking at something that could be in the future, but the problem is, if we don't move forward right now, and we do get the funding, we're going to be behind to the point where we won't be able to go forward. Then we're going to be in a situation trying to tell CTC, you gave us money that we can't use right now, because we didn't move forward when the time was ample for us to move forward and be ready for this funding, to be able to spend it and move the project forward. So those are things that we need to consider here. Robert is correct, if, if we don't get the funding, and we don't know by August 1st, and then we don't get the funding, there should be enough money in there left to close this project up. That money will not be able to be used, won't be used if we complete the entire project, because then the contractor just wraps up and goes home, the project's complete. We're not shutting him down from the job and having him move his equipment that he's already moved out there and put in place, so. Supervisor Stopper.
Do you want to call for public comment?
I already called for public comment.
Okay, with that, even shutting down, there's a cost.
Yes.
And that, because we, you know, there has been realignment done, and to finish off that, you, there, there's a cost, so that, that continues. With that understanding, I completely understand and agree that we aren't going to stop the project, you know, and these natural resources are a reality. And, you know, I'm not pointing the finger at any one person. Overall, I think we could have been more proactive and started dealing with this earlier, not be going to CTC and Caltrans at the last minute to midnight. I think we could have been a little bit more proactive on that, but that's, that's where we're at now. So I, if, if you're amenable to it, Chair, I'll talk to you about, before I make the motion, can we do a, to keep the project going right now, a sum that, you know, what is that sum? Or, you know, to keep us through July 1st, and then at that time, we can see where we're at and finish off what we need to-
County Council?
Um, the issue is, is that the, the contracts that are before the board today are for these, the, the full amount or the larger amount. I think the board could certainly not vote to approve these two amendments today and instead direct staff, it's an option, direct staff to come back with, with a smaller one. I don't know that, I don't think that on the fly, we can change these, if that makes-
And that, that was part, that's part of my question also, and also, in a timely manner, would that work for the cultural resources contracts, and then we'll be out of them before they, you come back the next meeting? Which, you know, again, last minute to midnight, we, we have a hard time voting on something because we're put between a rock and hard spot. Could have brought the, both options for-
And, and I don't agree with what you're saying, I've made that, I've made that same comment, and I wasn't really happy about it, but the situation happened the way it happened, and, and we're here. And, and I do have a, a question for Council. You're saying, I mean, there's a lot of items that we do change situations on that come before the board, you're saying this because this contract specifically is for a certain amount, that we don't have the right to adjust the amount, or, or, hold on a second, or table on this item right now and moving it to the end of the agenda, have Robert go talk to the two contractors and see if they're acceptable to sort them out and then come back and report to us?
We could do that, I just, I, it would have to be specific, we'd have to come up with, the board would have to give a specific direction. Do you know, I, I think it wouldn't work to make it open-ended of, you know, hey, Mr. Pakenger, go ahead and enter into a smaller amendment, so I think we could-
Fifty percent of each contract, one's for 900,000 and one's for 1. whatever, 2.1.2 million.
I think, I think the board could do that, we would obviously just, I just want to throw the caveat in there, you know, obviously, the contractors have agreed to, we would have to get their signature as well, yes.
I understand, that's why I said given time, but before we do that, yes, yes, Supervisor.
I, I hear what Robert's saying also. His full intention is not to spend the money until it needs to be spent, we got those thresholds in place. Mr. Garamendi, we've heard, we've heard, you know, and I, I agree with you, can we be amenable and trusting, Robert, to move forward and use as little money through, through July 1st as possible? I'll make the motion on the total amount if you're willing.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, no. I have never seen a consultant sitting on a 2.3 million, combined consultants on a 2.3 million project that's not going to find every way to spend it. My understanding is that they were out of money a while ago, so I assume that they're not working for free right now, I'm assuming, right? I mean, when do we, when do they stop massing, are they out of money in the contract?
No.
And Matt, I thought Matt said the other day they were at zero.
For, for the Dubey portion, their, their own company's portion, which was a small amount, yes, for the, we've been moving some budget items around to keep a little bit of the archaeological work moving, but there's, there's very little left.
And one, and very little left, and Dubey and Doakken, they're also in charge of managing the, the construction project, right?
No, that's, that's a different, construction firm was a different company.
All right. Now, I'm sorry, gambling's gambling, and every gambler puts down chips and thinks that one more bet is going to get him over the line, and I'm not a gambler.
I disagree with that. So, motion? Do you have a motion to approve the item?
Moved.
Do you have a motion by Supervisor Fuldorff, do you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second by Supervisor Howrady. Call for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1 for both items, 25 and 20, the motion for 25 and 26.
I certainly hope you're right. I'm going to be watching extraordinarily closely.
Yes, I move both.
And thank you, Jack.
And I will hold you all accountable if we end up picking someone's RIM funds. We're not becoming our district.
We, we still missing a lot of money in RIM funds from the storm damage in 2017 and 2019, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will take a break right now to allow Stacy to set up, and then we will move into the proclamation, and then move into their presentation. Receive a presentation from the Calaveras, Mariposa Community Action Agency, Stacy Johnson.
Is that on, my mic?
No, you have to push the button. At the red light, it'll come on, push it harder.
No, it's on.
Oh, it's on? Oh, I can't see the red light. It's on.
All right, we're ready to go. I am first going to ask for Grace, technology is not my friend, so we'll, we'll get through this. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and provide an oversight of what community action does and what we've been a part of in 2022 and looking beyond. Thank you. The promise of community action. Community action changes people's lives and embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community, and we are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. Felt it was important to share today the history of community action, and this video
In 1964, 30 million Americans lived in poverty. Although most of the poor were white, the power of the civil rights movement raised the issue to a place on the national agenda and stirred the new president to action. Can you help us free these Americans from the personal poverty? And if you can, let me hear your voices. As a young man, Johnson had taught Mexican-American children in rural Texas. Later as ex-ambassador, he idolized Franklin Roosevelt and dreamed of completing the New Deal. He named his vision for a better America, a great society. It included civil rights, voting rights, support for the arts, medical care to the elderly, and help for the poor. Lyndon Johnson was a master at moving legislation through Congress, but he had no blueprint for ending poverty. For that, he looked to Shriver. If a general was asked, you know, I want you to launch war on Grenada, could you invade and take it, or, you know, that's something you'd get your mind around, but a war on poverty, that's like saying, could you, if an front page person said, could you wage war on gravity? He thought, oh my God, how am I going to do this? He began by ordering research, and then he went looking for what the author Michael Harrington called "the other America," the invisible poor. In Appalachia, Shriver saw schools that were shacks and heard stories of children eating dirt from the inside of stovepipes. In the deep south, he witnessed the rule of Jim Crow whereby black children were kept out of school to pick cotton, while their parents faced violence if they attempted to vote. In the north, most blacks were confined to ghettos, cut off from good schools, housing, and jobs. When Shriver saw the research he ordered, he was stunned. Of all the nation's poor people, half were children. He became very, very committed to the point where this was no longer just a political assignment or something he needed to do because the president asked him, but this was something that had to be done and done right, and became very passionate about it. People are interested in being treated as human beings, they're interested in having other people treat them, as the Declaration of Independence says, as equals. That's the first thing that's needed in the war against poverty. The civil rights movement has elevated the notion of equality, and he wants to extend that spirit now to programs to end poverty nationwide. You have to have that sense of human respect and dignity and equality before these other specific programs like a health program or an education program that has maximum power. Shriver called up anyone who knew anything about poverty, activists, scholars, the priests and nuns who worked among the poor, and the reporters who wrote about them. In 16 weeks, they had a plan. It's not a program of federal handouts to alleviate poverty temporarily, it is aimed to help those who are willing to help themselves get out of poverty by building up their skills, increasing their employability. Shriver hated the idea of handouts, which he equated with what he called cheap grace, a kind of a charity which is not empower people. The plan created OEO, the Office of Economic Opportunity. As in the Peace Corps, he wanted the poor to lift themselves out of poverty, and he wanted privileged Americans to work among them. OEO launched Vista, Head Start, Youth Corps, Job Corps, Upward Bound, Foster Grandparents, Work Study, and a way to give poor communities resources for their own anti-poverty programs called Community Action. Community action, as its name implies, is local action. We depend completely on local communities that come to Washington with their own programs of combating poverty in the ways that they say so to do in their own hometown.
So I feel that that video, if it doesn't hitch at your heartstrings, then we need to talk. It is the very thing that drives me every single day, is to work to create opportunities so that all people have the ability to thrive. So, and I'll go into detail a little later in, in this presentation as to how we do just that. So, community action, our agency is funded solely by the Community Services Block Grant, and I want to provide to you a financial overview of, of our contracts for 2022 and then for 2023. So, community action agencies receive base funding throughout the network, and it's based on population, on formulas, and, and so in 2020, we received our CARES funding on top of our regular 2022 contract, and I want to highlight in the CARES contract section, we received just roughly over $399,000 on the onset of the pandemic, and all of that, with the exception of 13, a little over $13,000, was utilized for direct service within our community, communities, Calaveras and Mariposa Counties. $13,500 roughly went to support housing staff, and that's it. Every other penny went directly into the community through a variety of services, so I'm very proud of, of that, that we were able to quickly shift our focus and, and work to redirect funding and, and I'm very proud of that as, as an agency. CSBG is a federally funded investment that aims to reduce poverty in the United States. CSBG is funded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Administration for Children and Families, and the Office of Community Services. You'll see that our 2022 discretionary and regulars still show an outstanding balance that need to be expended. Those fundings amounts have changed since this report was created, and those, full expenditure will happen by May 31st of 2023, and then we are currently working on our '23 contract. So our annual report, we were able to serve 486, 4,862 individuals, equalling 4,544 households, and this was done through a variety of means. 60% of those services were provided through our Operation Comfort and Care Program, and within that program, we have special projects that took place, the Umatter Backpack Project, which we provided backpacks to approximately 3,600 students, TK through some sixth graders in Mariposa County, all in a way to say, we see you, we recognize you through the pandemic, and these backpacks were filled with nothing but fun, loaded with bubbles and balls and crayons and markers and pens, and they were distributed throughout our school, our elementary schools throughout both communities, both counties. We are active in disaster response and recovery efforts, where we will provide blankets and, and food and beverages to shelters, warming centers, cooling centers, amongst other things, homeless outreach kits, go bags for volunteer firefighters, and essential supplies to seniors, families, and individuals in need, and these could be household products, something as simple as Pine Sol or deodorant, and there's nothing, no supply that is too small when you're in need of these items. 27% of the services were provided through housing support, support, supporting a portion of staff time in Calaveras County, as well as mortgage and rental assistance through the pandemic, direct services provided through existing programs in both Calaveras and Mariposa County. And 13% of the services were provided through capacity building efforts, where we provided strength founders and strength-based leadership trainings to our private and public partners. So, CMCAA in action. These are many of the activities that we have been engaged in through 2022 and continuing CMCAA is very active, I will say this proudly, we're very active in disaster response, recovery, resiliency efforts. I mean, it's so important in our rural communities when you have people, several people that wear mini hats, and that's how we do it locally, and so we step in where we can. We hold a function in the EOC, the ESF 17 function, where we work to coordinate volunteers and donations. So, there's that. Operation Comfort and Care, I listed some of those activities prior. We also participate in Health Fair- We also participate in health fairs and other events that we can on the right track. We've provided outreach through Calaveras High School, Mariposa High School, and Bret Hart. We provided homeless outreach kits to Mariposa County, worked with their Health and Human Services Agency. And then capacity building. So these are the things that we're actively engaged in. Strength-based leadership. We are a partner with the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce and SBDC to provide lunch and learns for our business community. And then we work with Calaveras County Public Health to bring disaster preparedness trainings to our community. CMCAA in Action, local, state, and federal engagement. This is so important. So we're not just combined to an office. We serve on boards and task forces and committees and represented at local, state, and federal levels. I'm very excited to share that we hold a seat on the 2023 CSBG, the Community Services Block Grant State Plan Work Group, representing rural community action agencies, as well as participation last year on the CSBG State Funding Allocation Task Force. It's so important that we have a rural voice at the table at a federal level, hearing what our challenges and our opportunities are. I believe this is one of the most important slides that I can share with you today. And Mother Teresa, I believe, says it best. I can do things that you cannot, and you can do things that I cannot. Together, we can do great things. And here is just a list of partners that we work with, that we have worked with, and that we will continue to work with. And I feel wholeheartedly that I can come to a table with my strengths, but I also come to the table with my weaknesses. So it's so important to engage our partners and our collaborations so that others come to the table with their strengths. And I don't have to carry the weight, I'm not intended to. And then we create this cohesive collaboration, and that's how we serve our community best. Agency highlights. So CMCAA was featured in the Office of Community Services and Development, CSD. They are our state entity, our funder, so to speak. We were highlighted in the Spotlight July 2022 edition for the You Matter Backpack Project. We also received the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce 2022 Golden Frog Award for the You Matter Backpack Project. And then I was blessed to be a presenter at the 2022 Cal-Cappa Annual Conference in San Diego, specifically to the power of partnerships. On the horizon. So we just completed, the board just completed their 2023-2025 Strategic Plan Goals. And they are as follows. Funding and sustainability, working to grow our financial capacity and our sustainability. Community outreach and promotion to create awareness of CMCAA. We want to be better at sharing all the great things that CMCAA is a part of and partner with other agencies, organizations, and individuals to provide services. While we currently do that, we can always be better at it. Our JPA revision, that is currently in the works. That will allow us to build capacity to serve our rural communities. And then last but not least, we just finished up our 2023 Community Needs Assessment, which that document will drive our 2024-25 Community Action Plan. And so we are required to do this on a biannual basis. And it will identify gaps in services and opportunities. And then the board will then direct staff on how we deliver services to meet those identified needs moving forward. Our Community Action Plan is currently posted on our website for public comment. So I would encourage anybody that can to go on and check that out, and please provide your input. Again, recognizing our board governance, that we are a tripartite board, that is a requirement of CSD and of the Community Action Network, that we have public sector, private sector, and low-income sector representation. And then last but not least, I will leave you with this. Before I play the video, I would just like to leave you with this thought. Community action is not a one-size-fits-all. The very design was to allow local communities to meet their needs through local action. While Community, while CMCAA carries the title, we all bear this responsibility. It's about helping people, changing lives, period. We're proud of the work we are involved in and the unique way in which we are blessed to serve our rural communities.
The Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action Agency, established in 1991 through a joint powers agreement between Calaveras and Mariposa Counties, celebrates 31 years of meaningful service to our rural mountain communities. CMCAA is funded through the Community Services Block Grant, a federally funded investment that aims to reduce poverty in the United States. CMCAA board members, staff, and community partners, through thoughtful and intentional planning, are committed to creating opportunities to serve individuals, seniors, families, and children who are experiencing difficulties due to the challenges that life can often bring. During times of disaster, the Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action Agency roots in partnership with local service providers, community organizations, nonprofits, and public agencies to provide support to those who have been impacted or displaced. It was our call to action that created the Operation Comfort and Care Program, that quickly provided mortgage and rental assistance to many who faced unforeseen hardships. Through the Operation Comfort and Care Program, we embraced new partnerships and created special projects to foster a renewed hope of brighter days ahead for those we serve. Go bags were provided to local volunteer firefighters who often face the financial burden of these necessities while on the front line protecting our rural communities during emergencies and disasters. The You Matter Backpack Project was designed to love on our children and bring a smile back to their faces after two long years of experiencing the stress and burden that the pandemic placed on their Chinese shoulders. It is our mission to improve the lives of our residents by developing and supporting community resources that promote health, safety, and economic self-sufficiency, and to ensure that all residents have the opportunity to thrive in their communities. The promise of Community Action. Community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community, and we are dedicated to helping people, help themselves, and each other. We are Community Action, helping people change lives.
With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any board comments, questions?
Supervisor Stapper. You know, in years past, serving on the CMCAA board, they, it's a group of people that are just so phenomenally dedicated to the community and love their community, and they, they work to do the best work for the community. You know, as, when they put the OEO together, as it said in the video in the 1960s, you know, when they put it together, it was not put together to just give handouts, as, you know, help people that want to help themselves. And I think that's a mantra that we've talked all about a lot inside this county as a board, is a hand up, not a handout. And I completely love all the good work you do. Now, this is a federal-funded agency. At the same time, these funds, a lot of these funds are going to the state or have state guidance around them just because of the way state laws work. And this is where I have not, you know, the organization, the people here are phenomenal. But with the way the state has structured moving forward on housing and everything, it's tying our hands in so many ways. And what I see from my point of view is them putting it into Health and Human Services and telling them, look, you go find ways to build homes. Look, Health and Human Services don't build homes. You know? What, what, what the state structured has constricted the ability of good people like you to do the good work in the sense that they're just building the bureaucracy, and it's not, the money's not helping as many people before it hits the ground. It's just being burned up before it gets there in a lot of sense, in a lot of ways. And I brought up with the CSAC I went to in 2019. They sat up there during a meeting before they started doing these housing requirements for counties. And they went through five different things. We're going to make you fire-hardened homes. We're going to make every house have solar on it, and all these things. And then at the end of, at the end of their statement, the state's like, and then we're going to hold counties accountable for making houses affordable for people. I was like, I raised my hand, I was like, excuse me? You just said five different things that make houses cost more to build. And then you say you're going to have a government agency that doesn't build homes? You're going to hold them accountable for building them cheaper? I'm sorry, that doesn't make sense. Everyone in the room agreed. It was actually a planning thing with Peter Mallor and the planning director of Los Angeles County. And it was like, one size doesn't fit all, doesn't work for rural counties. And actually, LA County is like, it's a one size doesn't fit anybody. It doesn't work for LA either. So I appreciate the good work you do. To fathom getting through all the things you actually are able to do is hard for me to see because all the roadblocks and hurdles in the way of you doing your good work. I appreciate all the work you and your people do, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stapper.
Any other board comments? Supervisor Paul Inor?
Yes, I was just going to say, I've enjoyed being on the board, and it's great working with the mayor, president, county supervisors, and the volunteers that make up the board as well. They all give up their time out of their day to show up and volunteer and help out when they need it to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hubbard.
I just wanted to say thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was on CMCAA years ago. This agency, Stacy, you've brought it a long ways. Before, it was just, we got a set amount of money from the state and through the federal government. And we just allotted it to three or four different things every year, and that was basically all of it. At one time, we were going to actually try and turn it over to ATCA or Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency at one time. We didn't do that, and I'm so glad that we didn't do that. I'm glad that Mark stepped up for a while, and he got the things going. And then you took over, and you've just got things going very well. You got a great board, and you guys are out there in the community helping. And I really appreciate all the things you've done for this agency. Thank you, Stacy, and your staff and your, your, everything, all the members. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. I also want to, before I, before I leave, I have to give a special shout out to, as you'll notice, I am a staff of 1.05, and that 0.5 is probably the most important piece of who we are. Ms. Lawrence Grimminger, she's our fiscal administrator at Helping Human Services, in which none of this is possible. She keeps us all in line, and I appreciate her. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? From the side of? None in the room? Do we have anybody online?
There is none online.
None online. Okay, well, thank you for your presentation, Stacy. And we'll just take a couple-minute break for her to break down.
Authorized the board to sign an agreement with Renee Ramirez, M.D., to serve the Calaveras County Health Officer as the Calaveras County Health Officer for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, for the not to exceed the amount of $166,404.04.
Yes, thank you.
It's curious about the 4 cents. And two, adopt a resolution appointing Renee Ramirez, M.D., as a Calaveras County Health Officer effective July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, in line with the aforementioned agreement.
Well, good morning, Chair, members of the board. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. We return with this item today. We wanted to be able to answer any specific questions that your board may have.
Any board questions on this item?
I had put in my questions before, and she's forwarded me quite a bit of things. On two, compensation and payment, 2.1. Total compensation for services described in Exhibit A. Scope of work services contractor to be compensated. All that, the all-inclusive rate of $13,860.67. So somewhere around the way that comes out to?
Four cents.
Four cents. You know, if you put in a .09 somewhere. Per month. In the event of a public emergency requiring contractor to provide additional services beyond those described in Exhibit A. A scope of work, additional services contractor shall be reimbursed at the rate of $200 per hour, which will additional, you know. It goes on to say that the $166,404.04 per year could go up to $200,000, I believe, whatever, based on an emergency event, which we have been in the last few years. And in that time, you forwarded me the '21-'22 monthly payments and the '22-'23 up-to-date current monthly payments on that. And every one of them was $13,000 flat on the .42 or .4 FTE. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
So at no time did he, during the pandemic event, when it was still open, did he charge over that?
Correct, not at all.
Right. With that understanding, I just like that to be considered in the future that, because she did forward me the comparison on salaries, at a 4 tenths FTE, he is actually paid more based on the 4 tenths than surrounding county like counties. You know, some of those counties do pay more because they do do an FTE. But based on the 4 tenths and the amount that we pay, we are now going into a non-pandemic event. I'm willing to move this item and approve it because, like, the state requires us to have a public health official. I do support having a public health official. In the future, I think that we could consider possibly in future years how we could extend those dollars to best help the people. And that's all I'm asking for, is that consideration for future, future contracts. So barring any other supervisor's comments or anything, I would like to make a motion at one seat.
Well, we need public comment, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, public.
I have a question.
Supervisor Gerretti.
We contract for 16 hours a week, two full workdays. Do we use, do we have a medical doctor working for our staff two full days a week?
Yes, and it's broken out over a 24-hour period, seven days a week. He is responsive to hundreds of animal bites. We've had water issues, air issues, countless contagious disease control requests that we've had. And they happen at any time of day or night. We've had rabies incidences. I would argue that he works more than the 16 hours per week. Several incidences over and over. I cannot articulate exactly the amount of hours beyond the 16 hours, but I feel very confident that he is providing you further than the 16 hours he actually accounts for.
Well, we should certainly compensate someone for the work that they do. So maybe we could add those numbers and figure out if we owe them more money. Hundreds of animal bites?
Yes, since July of last year, correct.
Okay, solid bite. Thank you.
And I'll attest that I was one of those.
Some may have, may not have had a rabbit.
And I would say that Dr. Ramirez personally called me two times on it. Once right after and once a week later. So he was on it.
Just to make sure you weren't rabid?
I thought we called him as a board member.
Probably. Probably.
Call you back.
No, it wasn't because I was a board member.
I thought that was your complaint before, that you hadn't called me back.
Well, that it was, but he did make two phone calls because of the incident that I experienced.
That's one way to get to five votes.
And that is what his.
That is one way.
Yeah, that's what his job is. I was just attesting that he does do, he does do what he's supposed to do. So, um, personal experience from it. So, we have any public comment out there? No public comment in the room? How about public comment online?
There's none online.
None online. So, I'll bring it back. And Supervisor Stoppard, you were gonna make a motion?
I would like to make a motion in full on what we have presented to us at this time.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppard.
Oh, second.
Second by Supervisor Folonore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the next item. Item number 31 is an informational item from Integrated Waste Management to provide us with an update regarding the Clean California Free Dump Days. Yes?
Yes, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Megan Osborne, Department Analyst with Integrated Waste Management. And I am reporting on the Clean California events that took place in this current fiscal year. We partnered, Integrated Waste Management partnered with Caltrans and the Clean California Initiative, the Greater Valley Conservation Corps and the Mattress Recycling Council to bring a total of six Clean California Free Dump Days to Calaveras County, starting in November of 2022 and we finished in February of 2023. And the events were strategically held throughout the county in West Point, Arnold, San Andreas, Angels Camp, Valley Springs, and Copperopolis. And the goal of this partnership was to help us eliminate the dangerous and unsightly illegal dumping and bring conveniences to our residents by providing them an opportunity to dispose of unwanted waste tires, appliances, and mattresses at no cost. And the staff report did not include our last, the collection numbers for our last event in Copperopolis, so I want to give an update on those collection numbers. We did serve a total of 500 residents at all six events. We collected 940 tires, 703 appliances, and 421 mattresses. And, um, Calaveras, I'm sorry, Caltrans did reimburse IWM for the total cost of all of these events, and that was a total of $42,557.39. So, this is a multi-year cleanup effort led by Caltrans and we are moving into this next round of cleanup days. We have, we are now referring to them also as free recycling events instead of free dump days, trying to work on our messaging there. And, but we have scheduled six more events, starting in July, July 8th, and we'll wrap up September 9th. We're working on the details of the locations of all of those, um, working with all those partners to schedule the details. And we would like to wrap up this year before the winter hits. We ran into some snow and rain and sleet, but it did not deter people from coming out to any, any of those events that we held. So, I'd like to thank you for all your support. And if you have any questions or comments.
Supervisor Garmini.
I love this program and it just does wonders. As long as we can keep it going, let's do it. Certainly tires and appliances, it saves our road. And it's public, you know, public works awareness. It's a lot better to have, not have our guys and gals have to pick that up off the side of the road. It's just super, especially the tires. They just tend to stack up everywhere. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Any other board comments?
Yes, Supervisor.
Hi, Megan. Thank you. I actually live just off highway floor and I deal with tires and mattresses all the time. Is there anything we could do on these dump days to, for constituents who don't have a truck, who can haul this to the free dump days?
Recycling days.
Recycling, sorry.
Yes, the free recycling days.
You know, for example, I don't, I don't have a truck at the moment.
Right.
And it makes it difficult that I currently have about 10 tires and two mattresses I'd love to get rid of.
Mm-hmm. We can definitely look at that. I, we'll, we'll look at some of that and see if there's something we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other supervisor? No? Okay, I'll open up the public comment. Is there any public comments in the room? Seen none. Is there any online?
There is none online.
Well, this was an informational item and I want to thank you very much and, and re-going through this and setting this back up again for this year. It's a great program and thank Caltrans for doing this. And as for you guys for embracing it and setting everything up so we can get that, just get the, the word out there when we start, we have committed to the place and the dates. Last time in the Valley Springs area in Copper, it was kind of wait till, but if we can get it going forward so it's out there and people know, um, plenty of time. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, we move on to the next item. Item number 32, this is a resolution, Integrated Waste Management adopt a resolution accepting the Cal Waste 8.21% rate increase for the contract year of 2023, 2024. Jennifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jennifer Cashy, Director of Integrated Waste Management, um, Chair, respective members of the board. Thank you for having me. Um, the item here, uh, is based upon our, uh, contract that we established with Cal Waste in 2016. Um, within that contract, we see a service raise adjustment, an annual service rate adjustment. This year, the annual service rate adjustment is at an 8.2% increase, which would, um, uh, increase the monthly consumer cost of a 35-gallon cart by $2.23. A 65-gallon trash cart would increase by $4.81. And a 95-gallon cart would increase by $8. Uh, this increase, um, is, is reflective of their, their request, um, based upon their, um, their increase to their items that they have, um, projected. And as indicated before, on our 2016 contract, should the board not choose, to choose not to adopt this Cal Waste contract increase of 8.2%, um, the county would be required to compensate for that increase back to Cal Waste. Uh, so that would result the county not realizing $186,000 in franchise revenues and would additionally require the counties to subsidize that difference in an amount of $346,395. Um, IWM is not recommending that we, um, we absorb this financial because we are not able to absorb this right now and carry out our necessary functions.
Any board comments or questions? Supervisor Stoppard?
Yeah, so we would absorb this if we voted no. Um, in, in no, in no way can we, uh, make a suggestion on changing the percentage as per the contract, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So, um, one other question. What were the rates in 2016?
I don't have that number in front of me. I apologize Supervisor Stoppard, but I could get those for you.
No, no, no problem. I was just curious on, uh, total percentage of rate increase from 16 to, uh, 2023.
I actually, Supervisor Stoppard, I have the, the 2016 franchise agreement up and I believe that Exhibit A included the monthly rates that were in place.
Right.
Then. And it was, uh, $22 for a 35-gallon, um, cart and then 47, 50, and 79 was the three.
What, what, what is the, the 35-gallon?
Uh, so this is, Exhibit, oh.
Today?
Um, I have that increased amount in front of me. So, that 35-gallon is increased at $2.23 since last year. Last year, we had a 6.3% increase. Um, we've experienced.
The total, Jennifer, you, I, I.
What's the cost now, today, which is 8.2?
Um, I apologize. I don't have that number in front of me either.
29.37.
29.37. For the 35-gallon? Thank, thank you, Mary, about that portion of it.
Any other board comments? Supervisor Garmini.
Jim, thank you very much. What is the percentage of our residents, generally speaking, that use Cal Waste versus hauling their own?
Uh, we have about 25%.
25%.
Correct.
And so, this isn't related to this, but kind of. So, if we didn't have a landfill or transfer stations, that would increase, obviously. There'd be no other option for people to haul their garbage. It all had to join Cal Waste, correct?
If we eliminate other transfer stations?
Yeah.
That is correct, yes.
So, it's kind of, yeah. I'm just going back to, you know, our, our, a deal's a deal. I don't like this deal, but the deal is what it is. Um, and it, and it just, there's been a lot of misconception, bad information have been put out.
I agree.
In this county, through our partners. It is misleading and self-serving. So, that's just, is what it is. That's a statement, not a question.
I, I, I agree with Supervisor Garmini and the other option would be along the side of the road. If they don't have the money to, to do that. Um, and, um, I, you know, you, you talked about that email that went out, the information that went out. I didn't see a constant contact email go out regarding this 8.21% increase by the same people that sent the other one out. It was kind of avoided. It was not even mentioned. I don't even know how many people know this is on our agenda now. Because again, there was no constant contact email sent out saying, hey, we're raising our rates. You know, the only thing was against the county. And you're right, it was very misleading and a lot of it was not accurate. It just picked out certain things. So, I'm, I'm still hearing things about that. We even heard a public comment this morning about it. But yet, nothing was been done or said about 8.21% increase for Cal Waste and the fact that we have no choice. There was, again, no constant contact. Email sending out saying, hey, we're raising our rates and you can't do anything about it. That was not done. So, it was one-sided. The other thing is, I want to ask Cal Waste, I'm, I'm just concerned because, um, generally I'm up and, um, when, and I use their service and I'm out and about in my property and I most of the time see Cal Waste that comes on Monday in the morning AM to pick up the waste. And we have two containers. We have one for household waste and we have one that says recyclables. Yet, when the guy, and you would think that it would be two different trucks that come and empty those containers. But it's one truck who picks up each container and dumps it right into the same truck. So, why are we separating it when it all goes into one truck? When it gets hauled to double springs and you guys start separating it there? Why don't we just have one large container and we just do it?
I think Martin can probably explain that.
There's a divider in the truck. So.
I've never seen a divider.
No, inside, inside the truck. So, when you put garbage, it goes this side, then they push it over and the recycling goes on the other side.
That's, that's.
Am I right?
It's all split body.
Split body truck.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering because I see them dump it all in the same, I'm thinking, why are we separating?
Maybe a double springs, I'll show you one. It's pretty cool. It's less trips down your road. You mentioned in the air, and where to have the rest of it. It's a split body truck.
All right. Good. That's why I asked the question.
No, no.
You have to go in it? I'm not going in it, Mary. I'm not going in it.
Yeah, um, you take your camera and go down.
Now, you just gotta get them to load from both sides so that you don't have to go down the road twice.
Yeah, from the center of the road.
I don't say that.
Okay, well, thank you for that information because I've watched it and watched it. I'm just thinking, why are we separating, not, you know, when it's going in the same truck? So, okay. Any other board questions or comments?
I have one thing to follow up on because, uh, you know, I have that question. I would just want to work the numbers. So, 25.1% is the raise on the rates from 2016 till current. Um, that's, that's in the contract, as Mr. Garmini said, a deal's a deal. Uh, that's the deal made by the board in 2016. That's the board we abide by and we have to respect until 2026, when 2026 comes around. Definitely a consideration by, uh, the board then should be, uh, on how that's structured and how we may or may not have a say in, in those types of contractual agreements, along with, uh, you know, anything that may be a monopoly on hauling services. That, that's, you know, yeah. We were obligated to the contract, but we have the choice in the future to make things better or right for the county and its, and its constituents.
So, I will open up the public comment. Public comment in the room? No public comment? Is there any online?
There is no public comment online.
No public comment online. We'll bring it back to the board. Open for a motion. Do I have a motion?
Oh, wow. So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
I'm enthusiastic, you guys.
Yeah. All right. So, split truck Hubbard.
I think he knows all about it.
No comment.
All right. We will go on to item, uh, I'm being asked to take a break. Can we, we take a five-minute break?
Mr. Oliver, we good?
We're good.
We're good.
We're good.
It's almost. So far, so good.
All right, we are back. We're on to item number 33. This is the last item on our regular agenda. It's an informational item, the code, from Code Compliance. It's to receive a Code Compliance 2023 update and conduct a study session. Mr. Oliver?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. With me is Sabrina Cable, our Senior Code Compliance Officer. And what we're, what we're bringing you is, um, discussion, some ideas. We've been listening for the last couple of years and we've been listening to the community, to the sheriff's office, to the board members. We've been watching process as we, as we look at improving the Code Compliance Program. And, um, I, and, and I guess I just want to say to make no allusions about it, I understand that the Code Compliance Program years ago generated some, uh, negative, um, negative press, if you will, surrounding enforcement and management of, uh, the, the first attempt at a cannabis program. Uh, Code Compliance is meant, more than anything, to be a, a hub and a support mechanism for every department in the county in order to, um, ensure compliance. Okay, so, compliance with state regulations, with county ordinances, with building codes, safety codes. Uh, but, but it's, they're a support mechanism. And, uh, being incorporated into the building department, they follow the same general guidelines that I presented to your board when you appointed me, what, four years ago now. We educate first. Um, and what Sabrina and I have been doing in the last few years is looking at ways that we can enhance service to the community and show that we can be effective, also show some compassion, uh, and show some flexibility and, and try and promote education and awareness. First, um, that being said, we have a series of items that we want to provide, that we, we want your feedback on before we start making some significant changes to, to how we do the job to meet the needs that your board has expressed to me many years ago that I, I take very seriously. Um, so getting, so with that being said, we'll kind of get right in here. We're attempting to meet all of the strategic plan objectives that, that your board has presented to us. And, um, part of this is reviewing and updating the Code Compliance Ordinance, uh, chapter 806. We're also increasing our interdepartmental coordination. You'll see that, that throughout this, we're going to be highlighting which departments we envision being involved with us as we, as we make these improvements. Uh, we're going to be enhancing education outreach for residents and businesses. Now, your board's strategic focus was business orientation, but, uh, it makes sense that as we identify issues that pertain countywide, we should be doing more outreach. We should be providing more handouts, more, more, um, awareness upfront. be providing more handouts, more, more awareness upfront. And then a, a big item was the blight cleanup in tourism corridors. It's going to be a critical component that I'd like to discuss and get your feedback on. And then developing the process for triaging and prioritizing code compliance cases, which we, we now have a successful model that we want to show you, that seems to be working quite well. And this is actually what it is. The, the triage process is a priority assessment matrix where every, every investigator that goes out to a site, they're going to catalog the violations and then they're going to look at this ranking list and they add a point for everything that they fall into. So you will gain a point for being an imminent danger to the public. You will gain a, a point for being a public hazard that's present in a highly trafficked area that has the potential to impact public spaces. If there are hazards to occupants, we're going to add a point. If it's an attractive nuisance and we know that it's generating people going to the site to get in there and it, it becomes an attractive nuisance, we add a point for that. High visibility, and then also multiple complaints. If we have persistent complaints from multiple people, that adds a point. If you've got other agencies, if the sheriff's office calls us or fire district calls and says, hey, we have a problem, we add a point. And then if there's this just egregious violations where the responsible party is just unrepentantly doing things that are creating a hazard in the public, we add a point. And then, so for every one of our cases, in our tracking system, we have that total for every case. The highest number gets the highest priority currently. So, so you may have a substandard house that is only a hazard to the occupants, but is a minor hazard. You can have a substandard house that has similar hazards, but is on a main thoroughfare and is generating, you know, all kinds of other complaints. And maybe that hazard is a potential fire hazard and the fire chief doesn't like it because it could burn neighboring buildings. Okay, now that's a higher priority, that's the one we're going to target. So this, this system has been working well since we've started and we do want to talk a little later on about maybe adding a point or two. If your board decides that there is another type of priority, we need to latch on to, to enhance this, this triage process, we can talk about that a little bit further through the presentation. Is there any questions with this before I move on? Okay. Sir?
You say we're using visual blight, but we don't specify tourist corridors. We took that out, you recall. So we're going to define where we're going to focus on, right?
Yes, yes. And, and as I said, well, we'll, currently, the presentation is the tourism corridors, but if your board decides you want to expand that for any reason in any direction, let's have that conversation, because ultimately, you know, we're providing the service as directed.
I just wanted to clarify that the strategic plan doesn't cite tourist corridor.
Okay, very good, thank you. What's that?
Scan toward repair.
Correct, correct, sir. So another one of our successes that we brought back a couple of years ago has been the abandoned vehicle abatement program. There was a delay when, when I came on board, there was contractual issues with tow vendors and Sabrina had sorted that out and we hit that in earnest. And we've, we've made a lot of progress in towing abandoned vehicles. The, we, we intend this next budget season to increase, or this budget cycle, to increase the amount of activity. Currently, we have about a quarter of an FTE and, and we respond to complaints. We intend, in order to meet the strategic plan goals, to increase that to a full-time person. And we'll talk about whether or not you, you have an interest in them being proactive and going after abandoned vehicles. This includes anything that ends up on the roadway with wheels. It doesn't cover boats, it doesn't cover jet skis, but, you know, your trucks, cars, buses, you know, those things that are abandoned on, you know, on private property or in the roadway, we have an opportunity to abate those and remove some of that visual blight. Sir?
I just, I'm curious about boats, because there's one off the road on twelve.
It's not on a trailer, so we can't get it. I know, I know. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, we, we all know which one I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, let's still conserve, but I just, you know, how can we solve that in the future, is my question.
And, and we will definitely be talking about that, because that, that goes from the abandoned vehicle program into a nuisance abatement program that we can be more proactive about. So we're definitely going to run into that. There is a fee that's collected on everyone's license or their, their renewal on their vehicle registration that we need to take back to have it voted on again. That, I'll get into the next slide that identifies some of the, some of the information on the, the abandoned vehicle abatement program. We actually performed more abatements in twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This last cycle, we did have some staffing issues. We had some people out and that did affect the numbers. But once again, this was, this was just based on a quarter of an FTE as opposed to having someone available to do that job all day long. So we can expect that with the visual blight component and the nuisance abatement component, we will be using the abandoned vehicle program a lot more frequently and in conjunction with greater cleanups to try and save the abatement fund and use that and spread that out a little further to meet our strategic goals. This, this is one of the biggest positive comment generators. People don't like seeing wrecked vehicles on the side of the road and, and we do, we actually, this is one of the services, the only service that I'm aware of that we provide within the city of Angels Camp, because it is a joint power. So we're not just cleaning up the, the county at large, we're also cleaning up the, the incorporated city of any of these vehicles. Critical item for, for nuisance abatement. It's important, I didn't want to jump the gun on this, but the, the fee that's collected that, that funds the, this program, we are going to take it to a vote to carry it forward. It is not a new fee, it's been around for a long time. We're simply maintaining that fee. And it's, it's a dollar for every vehicle registered in, in Calaveras County and two dollars for commercial. So it, it's, it's not a huge imposition and it's, it's, it's expected, it's been around for a very long time. So I'm, we're hopeful that we can maintain and, and get that vote necessary to carry it forward. Sir?
That vote is, we, we pass it. This is board supervisors, correct?
That's a, that's a ballot initiative.
Yeah, but we, we would have to approve it to go to the ballot, is what you're, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be coming later this year and then hopefully on the March twenty-four ballot.
Okay, that's good. Maybe you can take a look at what would happen if it was two dollars. I mean, I know that's difficult.
I'm not certain we can increase the amount.
I believe it's a state, yeah, fee.
Okay.
I agree, though.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
How many vehicles? And do we, do we know the number of vehicles based on what you get with that fee within the county of Calaveras? Or what's, what's the, what's the revenue on?
Approximately sixty thousand a year.
Okay.
Approximately.
Okay, that sounds pretty close.
In addition to that, because it is a, it, it's a fund that builds over time, if we were at half an FTE or a quarter of an FTE, we're not using all that and it is banking in that account that we can then spend. So right now, we, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have that number, the number in front of me, if it was currently in the account, but we can safely cover all the abatement activities under the current budget. And if we need to increase that for any reason, there is enough left over. If we see a, a need in the community, we can bring that to your board. So there's, there's plenty there for us to use to get this, this task done. And generally, the interdepartmental coordination is the sheriff's office, any county departments. Usually, it's, it's the Public Works Department or any of the other departments that, that are finding these, these vehicles. Highway Patrol regularly tags vehicles and notifies us up a tow. And it's, it's open for any complaints from the neighborhood or from the public at large. So it, as things come in, we just deal with it. But once again, there isn't a proactive component. We don't have someone going out and looking for them. It's one hundred percent complaint generated. So as far as progress goes, we have a proposed draft of eight oh six. It's, it's in a very rough form. We, a lot of what we're talking about today is what we hope to incorporate into a version that can be brought to your board for comment. The, my hope is that the end result from today, we'll make just a couple more changes and then I can bring forward a greater plan for you. But we intend on doing a lot of things to streamline the process and, and much of what we're going to be talking about today is just that. So we're, we're going to go into the, the challenge and solution around here, where we're going to let you know what hardships we're having and then we're going to let you know what we think could help. And then hopefully, at the end of this, we can go through and get direction on what you want us to do. And then if that changes at all as part of this communication, we, we know what to implement. Streamlining those requirements to be consistent with state law. We have a notice process in eight oh six that doesn't, it's supposed to be simplified, but between one notice and another, there are different amounts of information. We have certain types of cases by state law that require notice to more parties than, like for instance, a substandard housing case has far more notice to affected parties, tenants, financially responsible parties than say a zoning violation. And so we, we need to find a way to streamline that and make it to where it's easy to enforce without making a mistake that causes a case to start over. Many applicable laws require extensive research. There's, there's a lot of stuff, especially where you have cannabis starting to work its way in and we have different layers of enforcement regulation contained in Health and Safety Code and Government Code and various other codes that, that we have to comb through to make sure we're not tripping over anything. And there are continual changes based on case law and legislation that keep coming out. So we want to try and stay ahead of it as much as possible, provide the simplest possible solution. Ultimately, this update is long overdue. Things have been, it's not, it's not as though things just started changing. There's been a long history of these changes over time that we need to catch up with. So the different requirements for different case types as far as notification are, our goal is to go into two enforcement tracks. One for substandard housing, and I would add to that, substandard housing, dangerous buildings, and anything impacting health and public safety. We want to try and focus it down into a notice track and a, and a enforcement track for that. And then for the other code violations that are more administrative, we have a more simplified track than that with less notification and, and simpler forms. Ultimately, for code compliance, my, my vision here is that we treat this no different than a speeding ticket. If you did something wrong, here's your notice, here's your opportunity to correct it. If you don't, here's the fine, have a nice day, you know? If, if you feel like you were noticed in error, you know, here's your day in court or in our case, the appeals process. So we want to keep it as simple and easy to understand as possible. Process time is a huge issue because of the, the, the layers of law that we have to negotiate. It's frustrating because the, your, your constituents are filing a complaint and it might take two, three, four months to see any activity because of the steps involved. And then getting abatement authorization actually takes a lot of time to prepare because we're bringing it forward to your board. The current, the current mechanism for getting abatement done usually starts with, here's your notice of violation, you have thirty, let's say thirty days to clean up all the garbage. They wait thirty days, they don't clean up the garbage. So we send out now a citation and we say, okay, now here's our case management fee, you're now going to be charged a fine of a hundred dollars a day and you have another thirty days to clean up your garbage. And then if that doesn't happen, then we have to book a date to bring to your board a consent calendar item saying that we want authorization to abate the nuisance. And then that item could be pulled or the customer could come in and pull it and then, you know, just, you see where this is going, it drags the situation out. There are other jurisdictions who have implemented language in their ordinance that, that states that the board is authorizing county staff to abate the nuisance, should there be a violation where there is no appeal, we are authorized to abate and lean for costs. Assessments are required by law to go to your board for a vote. And there's a mechanism that we want to, to use to make that simpler as well. But ultimately, what we want to do is have a system where here's your notice, here's your polite reminder, okay, you didn't listen, here is your abatement costs. And if you don't clean it up and you don't appeal, we intend to come out and abate it by doing these things. And then if they don't appeal, we immediately schedule a contract or put it on the schedule and start that process. It's going to eliminate a lot of time, a lot of paperwork and ultimately reduce the cost to provide those services. Then on the assessment side of things, what we want to be able to do is as we have people who did not pay for those services, once we've done the abatements, we want to bring forward to your board, rather than going every time we have one come up, bring you a consent calendar item, we want to do like other entities do and just bring you quarterly or, you know, just before the tax rolls close, however the mechanism would work more efficiently, we want to bring you one board item authorizing the assessment of these specific cases on these, you know, on these sites for these amounts, so that you, you know the entire scope of the work that was done. And we can provide you a format to where you know there was adequate notice, there was adequate opportunity for appeal, the, the abatement was conducted appropriately and here is the cost, and then you know what the bottom line is, that you would be signing to get assessed in one shot. It takes it from maybe ten, fifteen different board actions to one board action. So we're hoping to streamline it in that fashion.
So, okay, two different things. When, when we're talking about lean for cost and the tax rule, it's a lean ba, based on assessed taxes. So at that point, in situations, let's say the trash abatement, you know, they don't clean it up, you end up going and cleaning up, that cost gets leaned against the property upon sale and could be as much as five, before, five years before realization on the return on that money in many cases. How's that money absorbed to the point of the, that five years later? How do we pay for that during that time?
So that's, I'm, I'm addressing that a bit later on.
Okay, no, I can wait, I can wait for that.
No, that's a, that's a good question. There's actually two tracks. There, leans and assessments are two distinctly different things. So a lean is simply a place marker saying if this sells, there's, there's a stake here. Assessment is different. The assessment is actually assessed as real taxes towards the property value. So when the tax rolls come out and someone gets billed for their property taxes, that's included. And then that is paid back. And if it's not paid back, then it's delinquent like a tax, any other taxes, delinquent. And then, and then it goes into your five-year timeframe. So yes, we're going to talk about how, how we try and move that forward a little faster too.
The, the second part and more specific to, to this is, you know, you talked about the time skip on situations like with the trash abatement, for example, but other ones that like, let's say, go into a point where it's a code compliance, you know, a lot of these go into either public health also. And, you know, the code compliance thing could be a public health issue. Is there any way we can streamline getting those taken care of quicker, just because it can have an effect environmentally or another way on the people surrounding that situation?
Absolutely. In fact, what we want to do is work with our, our partner development agencies to make sure that we're complying with all the state regulations. A good example is solid waste, garbage piles. State law, as, as I understand it, I'm talking with environmental health, you have seven days to remove garbage. You can't have garbage on your site more than seven days. So if we have a pile of, of garbage, our code compliance case can be, you have seven days to clean this garbage up or appeal. You know, we can, we can modify eight oh six to identify as well that in certain types of cases that are egregious or constitute a health risk, that we can bypass the, the friendly reminder, the notice of violation and go straight to the citation. That does allow them to appeal, they still have their due process, which I'm, I'm probably going to come back around on this a couple of times, but due process is, is vital, it's absolutely important. The friendly reminder component is- The friendly reminder component isn't necessary in the context of an emergency or a health or environmental hazard. And I, I do want to entertain the idea of bypassing those friendly reminders in those cases. So once again, going back to finding a way to meet the appeal and the due process requirements and still make this timely is going to be very important moving forward. I see Sarah thinking. Okay.
Very good.
Very good. Okay, so one of our other challenges, Sabrina was, used a very nice word here for slum lords. The, the recalcitrant landlord. The, the, substandard housing is a huge issue. It's not just, it's not just a dangerous or unhealthy environment for the tenants, but it also represents reduction in property values, increased risk of fire, increased risk of, of criminal activity in a neighborhood from a, from, you know, depressed properties or deteriorating properties. And, and there's just a lack of good housing in this county. What we want to do is, is enhance how we pursue substandard housing to get these, these dilapidated buildings back out there as, as healthy, occupiable structures. But we have a difficulty here. We want to show a little compassion here that in many cases, the tenants have nowhere else to go. They have nowhere else to go and, or they don't have the money to move. And that, that's, that's, that's a significant factor. Now, there are some tenants who have caused the problem in which case, you know, that, that's a, that has to be vetted out in the investigation process, but when it's truly a situation where the landlord is not maintaining the property, not looking out for the best interests of the health and safety of his occupants, there are mechanisms for the county to act and still show a level of compassion for those tenants and it looks like tenant relocation assistance. This has been on the books for a very long time. We can only use it currently in the sense that we can identify if a, a tenant is eligible, but then it's on the tenant to seek that relocation assistance civilly. Currently, the way this is written and how, how it is implemented is that if the county has an enacting ordinance, we can determine if the tenant is eligible and if they're eligible, we can provide two months fair market rent plus utilities to that individual so they can seek housing somewhere else. As, if the building is bad enough that it has to be vacated, that's what triggers this component. But it does require an enacting ordinance and it does require that we partition some funds, either from the abatement fund or to establish a separate fund, to be able to have enough money to vacate who we anticipate may get vacated for that year. Okay? Currently, because we do not have an enacting ordinance, we can educate them on, on the, the citation document because we're required to notice the tenants and the landlord. We can notice them that you are eligible, you're eligible for this much money and if the, and if the, if the landlord does not pay it within a timely manner, they may take them to small claims court for...
Two and a half times that amount, I believe it is?
Yeah, two and a half times that amount. So what we have to do is we encourage them, go to, you know, a real estate office, get the fair market rent for your area, that's the math, go to your, your, you know, they have to do the legwork. Tenants that are in a situation like this often do not have the wherewithal to do that and landlords will typically ignore them because they don't have the ability to seek legal advice. Now, we, we try to remind them of resources, we try and put them in touch with, you know, pro bono legal assistance, that sort of thing, but the resources aren't there. This is an opportunity for us to say, we know you're in this bad situation, here's the money necessary to go, we're boarding this up in a month, you have, or, or a week or a day or whatever the case may be, you have, you have to be out. And then we seek that from the landlord. Now, once again, there has to be due process, so there is an ability for the landlord to appeal and say, hey, that wasn't my fault. And, and that's, and that's not only fair, it's expected. We, we have to have that mechanism in place as well. But this does, I mean, if, if we were to set aside fifty thousand dollars, that's ten, ten households that could be relocated in an emergency where someone has let a property deteriorate to the point where we have to board it up. So something, something to consider and I strongly recommend it because that, that gives us the ability. Nobody in my office wants to kick a person out of a home, especially if it means going into a tent. How is that any better? Right? We want to be able to give someone the ability to go to someplace that is safe, not put them in a potentially more hazardous situation because this is technically legally unsafe. So this is, this is the best possible solution to that problem.
Thank you. Doug, I'm, as you know, we're, I'm very familiar with this challenge. We had a family in Mokil in the illegal rental. We had to red card board up the house. Fortunately, Health and Human Services and Robin Carter stepped up and got a roof over this family's head. We all felt, oh no, what's going to happen to this family that's getting put out on the street? We don't need to increase our homeless population. Does Health and Human Services, do they have funds available to, I mean, that, that they can work with you and on the spot, step up and, and provide this back, this backstop? Or coordinate?
So I, I can't speak to the exact programs, but Health and Human Services does have programs to help certain individuals in, in certain categories and, and, but there are limitations. Like for instance, many of the programs, you're not allowed to have pets. That's a problem. You know, if you don't, if, if they have a cherished pet, they have to surrender it to animal control in order to take advantage of this program or if they in any way have to leave that pet, they're not going to do it. So there's, there's opportunity there, but it's limited opportunity and they, they have to comply with those standards. This is an enhancement to that, you know, and in many ways is probably going to be the lead because it's, it's not conditional on any state regulation other than is this substandard? Do you need to leave? Now, so it, it is, go ahead.
I was just going to piggyback on that and I think that you just kind of hinted at it, but I, I would say many, most, all of HHSAs programs, you know, you have to be income qualified or there are other restrictions that it's not just that you've been displaced, that folks may not meet those criteria. So I think a supplement is kind of a good way of describing it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to, I'm glad that you have on here that the landlord, recalcitrant landlord is going to be ultimately held disposable because these families, they wouldn't be living there if they didn't have to.
Exactly.
So we have to be human about the thing.
The other hurdle we have is just there's no other place that's open for them to go, even if we did have the resources to put them somewhere.
Yeah. We see it all, it's a weekly problem practically for us and it really is hard to weigh the pros and cons when you just want to get someone safe and it's like, you know what's right, you know what the right thing to do is, but you just, you're limited. So this is a great solution.
Any further questions, let's move on. Okay. So required interdepartmental coordination. County council is, is going to be very helpful in helping us retool eight oh six. Planning department, HHSA, tax collector, auditor. In, in establishing a lot, a lot of what we do when it comes to substandard housing also involves what I, there is a task force now that the sheriff has headed up to handle some of the, the biggest situations where it's not just the substandard housing, but a lot of other components, including crime, that ball up over some of these centralized areas. But any agency that sees that there is a substandard housing crisis, we encourage them to reach out to us. If, if there's a concern over the health of someone being placed in a building, we want to, we would love to interact before they place them in that building. You know, so there's, so, so there's more than just this department. Anybody that sees a situation in a county agency that has a concern has contacted us. So the animal control has contacted us, sheriff's office, the fire departments will call and say, hey, this is a bad situation, can you handle it? So moving towards that code compliance being the hub for enforcing these things for all departments, we want to enhance that communication. So more challenges. The compliance, this is a good problem to have, I'm just going to say. By adopting a fee for service for maintaining a case and placing it on the notice and saying, if you don't correct this violation within this timeframe, we're charging you this fee because we're managing your case. A lot of people are correcting, they don't want to pay that fee. So huge deterrent is working. Downside, a lot of people are saying, I can't pay that right now, I know I need to get it done, can you give me a couple more months? Can you give me three months? Can you give me six months? And if we don't go to citation on them, we are not collecting a fee for those services, which means we did not collect even, even a quarter, even a tenth of the revenue because either they're cleaning it up or they're asking for more time. Code compliance, I'm just going to say it, is not meant to make a profit, it's not even meant to break even. It is a service to the community and if we can collect some form of revenue, and I will demonstrate in a moment that we are collecting revenue in various areas, but the goal is compliance, not to break even. That being said, if we're managing a bunch of cases to try and gain compliance, at some point we have to decide, when are we going to charge that fee? Is citation the right place for that? So this is kind of a challenge for the board because it, it feels good to say if you clean it up, you don't get, if you don't get a citation, you don't get a charge, but what about the person that drug out something that could be fixed in a month for six months? We really, we really need to find some way to get some cost recovery. What we're looking for from your board is, is direction to identify that if someone wants to negotiate for more time, that we collect that case management fee because we are truly managing that case and probably a lot further out than if we abated the nuisance ourselves. You know, we can abate a nuisance in maybe three months as opposed to someone who might need six months to fix it themselves because financial or family considerations, whatever the case may be. If we say, okay, we're going to manage this case, here's the fee for that, at least we're getting some, some income to staff a person to make sure we're following through on the cases that we're being compassionate about and giving them that time. So something to come back to later to discuss. RV dwellings. The housing crisis alone was, if that wasn't bad enough, we have Butte Fire survivors, we have, we have people that are, that are not wanting to be found, that are hiding in corners. There's, there's some significant, there's a significant level of people living in RVs and for many different reasons. Some of them, and most of them not malicious in any sense, I don't, I don't want to make it look negative, people are having a hard time. The Butte Fire, there was an allowance for five years from your board to stay in an RV during reconstruction. That expired three years ago. We, during, within the Butte Fire scar, we have survivors who are still living in RVs on their parcel, but we also have a situation where many of them have sold the property, have taken whatever settlement and left and the new purchaser moved an RV in, which was not what your board intended. So, so there's many different levels of the use of RVs currently. We don't want to just go towing people's RVs all day long, but it's clear that we have a significant problem. It does impact home values, neighboring property values. It does impact health and safety if they do not have a septic system, if they are discharging water. We do have RVs where people are stabbing in fireplaces into these RVs, which constitutes a carbon monoxide and a fire hazard. We're heading into fire season and if somebody decides to burn their RV down and, and sets a community on fire, that's a significant issue. So we have to find a way to abate the egregious ones and give an opportunity for people to transition out of, of the RV model. So, and at the same time, we hope to help alleviate the lack of inventory in housing. So we, you know, taken together, what we want to do is two things. One, we want to move to identifying where there's a potential that this is a safe occupation, that we can manage this to get them to transition, meaning a temporary, and this is, this may run into a discussion with planning and maybe a modification to ordinance code, but currently we don't have a mechanism for anyone to stay in an RV over fourteen days in a sitting and no more than thirty days in a calendar year. If we enter into a program where certain people that qualify can get a temporary RV dwelling hardship permit, it would essentially be a permit to put them on the map, we know where they're, they are, we can identify this and alleviate any potential safety hazards, environmental hazards, and, and let emergency services know they're there and how to get to them. We think that this might be a good first step so that they know that, you know, there's a limited time they can stay, here's your, here's your prep time to transition to something else. And once again, it, it tells the neighborhood, we see it, we're on it, we're monitoring it and there's less hazard as a result of our involvement. Sir?
Never mind.
No.
Grab this slide.
Ahah. So if we would qualify, I mean, if we can, it can't be, how do I say this? It has to be impartial. It has to meet a certain qualification. We don't anticipate allowing this in a zoning that is not a residential zoning. You know, having an RV parked at a site where it's an industrial plant or something is not, not in any way safe. It would have to be something to do with certain residential zoning types. We do anticipate that it would be a limitation, your board could decide that the, the duration of time, we were kicking around six months or a year. There's also the opportunity to discuss whether you want them to be able to get an extension for extenuating circumstances, but what does that really look like? What we're doing is we're just kind of throwing the idea on the table for you to turn around and, and, and discuss it further because honestly, this is kind of foreign territory. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction doing something like this yet. Okay, honestly, you're really not supposed to stay in an RV permanently unless you're in an RV park that is registered with the state. So this is, this is foreign, foreign land we're walking through right now. We, we will need some information from them. So a simple, simple strip map or site plan, where are you located on your parcel? Where's your legal water and electrical source? Is there a sewage, sewage disposal that is adequate? Is it city sewer? Is it, is it a septic system that's approved by environmental health? Do we want to maintain setbacks similar to a house from the property line? That way, we're at least staying consistent with fire code or, or building code. We want to look at something similar to that. We're kind of envisioning a stripped down version of a permit for like a shed or something, only it's meant to be temporary and go away at the end of this time period. And then we want to make sure that we have the right to inspect this site for the duration of that permit. If there's a complaint, we want to be able to go out and see if that complaint is valid. Sir, go ahead.
Just a quick question, as, as much to council as you. With this situation and you're not sure if there's another jurisdiction doing this type of thing, in certain types of zoning in our general plan, it may have an impact environmentally that's not considered underneath our EIR. Is that correct? And will we need to do some type of small EIR to be able to approve such things even though, or, or a non-mitigation issue because it's temporary?
It's, it's possible. There's going to be, I mean, and Doug said this, there's going to be a lot to look at and a lot of revisions, at very least to, to county code in, I think in multiple places and that's obviously something that we'll have to look at as part of that.
I, I will say that, that with a declared housing emergency, we may have some flexibility here to say, for a temporary basis because of the housing emergency, that we can act this way. And I think that's the only, otherwise, yeah, we're changing the zoning to allow for this and that, that has impacts. We, between me, Sarah and, and Mr. Elliott, there will, there will be discussions. But I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we can make this work. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we can make this work. Um, and then we have, you know, the, the typical stuff, the indemnification, we need to make sure it's revocable, and then, um, I guess we can say that this is an ongoing issue. It is growing as inflation grows, as, as the market change, uh, interest rates going up. This is an ongoing problem and, and it will continue to grow if we don't have some mechanism. Could this compound the problem? There's always a potential, but my, my thought process here in talking this through with, with Sabrina, by the way, if this doesn't work, it's all Sabrina's idea. Yeah. I'm kidding, kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But, but what I can say is that, that if we have oversight over this process, um, the worst thing that could happen is that we could decide that this is not working and bring it to your board and, and transition out. Um, it's not something that's, that in my mind is gonna create a bigger problem. If anything, it just simply won't work well.
That would be more difficult than getting this program running, trying to transition out and tell all the people who gave permits that, "We're out of it now and you gotta move."
Well, the best thing we could do in that, yeah, the best thing we could do in that case is to simply not issue any new ones and let the old ones expire and then transition them into some other form of housing.
One of the issues I have, even though we do this and it says an extension or whatever, you, we're, we're allowing this, and then the difficulty of getting them out, once it's over, or the fact that you've gone past your extension and so forth because of the situation that we're, why we're doing this.
Right.
It's, there's a lot of considerations and it, um, I know it's unique. It's, it's innovative maybe even, I don't know, but, uh, the reason it came about is because it is such an issue. Every, every week after week, trailer, 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 and like we were discussing with the tenants earlier, and having to weigh the pros and cons of, you know, I know this is a substandard house. I want to kick these people out so they can go somewhere nice, nicer, safer, but they don't have anywhere to go, you know? It's the same thing with RV dwellings. And then if we do the abatement, what does that mean? That means we're taking it and we're destroying their RV. Now they really have no place to go.
Well, it is, so, yeah.
So, and the other thing on is, is once you issue the one permit, it's growing. I mean, we've got a situation, as everybody knows, right off the highway by Toyon.
Yeah.
And that thing has just expanded. So, what's gonna, I mean, we have the right to, to go out and inspect, like you say, for the permit, but I, I, and we have to keep an eye on that. Okay, we got one permit and so we're just gonna start expanding and end up with four, five, or six.
Well, to, well, to be clear, uh, we want to make sure that, that this program is not intended to accidentally create an RV park. This is intended to help an individual on their property with their particular problems so they can transition into something better. If there's, if there's a landlord renting an RV on a parcel, they do not qualify for this. If, if two show up on the parcel and they're two different families, that's not gonna work. So, we, we need to be very clear that this is helping an individual with an individual problem, not trying to solve the, the homeless crisis.
That was my next question about renting out.
Yeah.
My own property and my friend here needs a place to park his RV.
Yeah, this is, this has to be very limited.
Think of it more in terms of like an ADU situation where one per parcel. For example, let's just use an example. My mother-in-law broke her hip and she needs somewhere to live, so we're gonna put her in a trailer. We're having a hardship. We can't afford to put her in a care facility. We're gonna put her in her backyard. It's, we're gonna get a permit for it, meet setbacks, et cetera. That's going to expire at the end of whatever term. If we still need it, we can apply for an extension. Maybe it would be granted. But one per parcel, think of it like ADU for emergency situations, not, "I'm gonna get ten per," and, you know, have, no. So, well, yeah, definitely I would, could think one per parcel is reasonable and, so, lots of considerations, but, yeah, nothing, we don't want to compound the problem.
Right, and they would have to stay in compliance as well. I mean, I, I think the biggest concern that, well, okay, I, I've done a lot of code compliance enforcement myself in the past and, and you end up being in a situation, I think that's, I'm gonna go down here so it's not buzzing. Um, my, one of my biggest considerations here, I'm sorry, I'll finish my thought here. The, um, as a code compliance officer, you're driving down the street and every once in a while you're gonna see an RV and you're gonna look at it and you're gonna say, "Okay, there's a giant pile of garbage and a car's been cut in half and two pit bulls. I gotta deal with that." Versus, uh, "Well, that's a nice RV and look at that. They got flowers and they're mowing their lawn and they got garbage cans and how did they hook up to water?" But you know what? You're taking care of the place. I have the ability to just let that ride. Well, does it, okay, we can, the county has the authority to, to choose the level of enforcement, but at the same time, how is that helping anyone? All it's doing is prolonging a problem, you know? So, so, this is part, part of a way to hopefully get more people to transition and not give the impression that the county is picking and choosing which RVs to enforce because then it becomes subjective, then it becomes contentious, and, and we don't want to be, no code compliance investigator wants to be in the position to be accused of any form of special treatment. Sir, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, I remember twenty years ago when I built the powerhouse, I lived on my property for two years, and my understanding was that the county allowed you to stay on the property in a trailer or what have you, uh, if you were building something. I can't remember if that was permitted at the time.
No, that, that is, and actually, I think that's the next slide, right? Oh, that's a good segue. Oh, no, okay, this is, it's the next slide after this one. So, no, that's, that's perfect, so.
There's three challenges down.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, three challenges, so one solution, two, oh, that's actually two solutions, two solutions down. So, uh, the pre-approved plans is something that we've been hinting at and slowly developing. What we're looking at doing as a standard is having, currently we have four plans that we're proposing that the county has inspected or has plan-checked and said, "If you want to use this plan, we'll cut the permit fee in half because we're not doing the plan check. We got it approved, it's good for three years, it meets all the requirements of the code. Take this plan, go down to a vendor, buy the materials, build your house." We have a six hundred square foot model, two six hundred square foot models, and a couple of twelve hundred square foot models. They are homes. They can be ADUs, they can be primary houses, but our goal is to say, and this, only in the last couple of years has any jurisdiction decided to take this on, and most building officials before that would say, "We're not in the business of designing." Well, we're not really designing, we're saying this is legal. Take it and run. And that, and so what we want to do is put those out on our website, start working with vendors, and I'll, and they'll be in one of our slides how we're gonna do that, but we get these out to the public and we use that in conjunction with this program and say, "Okay, look, I know you got a financial hardship, I know you, you're trying to make it work for your family, so, we're gonna let you stay in this RV under this little ministerial emergency permit for the RV while you get your permit and get the materials. Once you have that permit, then you're right. It transitions to you're allowed to stay in, in an RV while you're building your home. As long as you maintain that trajectory, you end up with a home on the parcel and we can put that RV away." And then we're increasing housing stock and we're meeting a need and reducing the RVs.
Thank you, Doug. I've talked to you about this before. I appreciate you going forward on something like this, the pre-approved homes.
We're, we're currently updating them for the current code standard. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. I tried to go off and get a area.
No, it's fine. So, the, currently we have four that we're trying to get pre-approved. We've talked to a couple of vendors on the outside of, of the county to see if they have an interest in taking that and providing a prepackaged material, a package with a price tag on it that says, "If you use the county's permit, or the, the county's permit program for this house, here's the price tag for the materials and we can have it delivered." Um, they've recommended that, "Hey, can we take your plans and change the roof line?" Or change a couple of things on it to make it meet the, the look of the community. And to that I say, "Sure, there's no reason why you can't." Uh, the, these are meant to be taken and experimented with and that allows us to get new versions on the books. I don't want to go crazy, but if we had maybe, you know, five or six different versions with different roof lines and different, uh, uh, window styles or something so that, you know, it looks a little different in Mountain Ranch than it does in Murphy's, you know, it, it gives you the opportunity to make it enticing and have more people get on board. And don't just, we're not making it just for the RV issue, but also making it so that more people can take advantage of the property they have without having to consider, "I need to live in an RV for two years to make this work." Okay, so, so, we are going to, um, so that's the partnership with local businesses. We're starting that communication now and it's, and it's, it seems very positive. Uh, we also, uh, I recommend partnering with, um, our other development departments to try and see if, if in conjunction with this type of plan, can we streamline the other permits to ride along with it? Is there a way to, um, tag on septic well? Uh, what can we do for minor grading or, or encroachment permits as, as an add-on to these to try and kind of condense it? I know the one-stop-shop model is something that, that every jurisdiction likes to implement. Our topography doesn't allow it in many cases, but for a program like this, it might be something that, that we can streamline. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to those department heads yet, so if they're currently watching this board meeting, I will see you very soon. Okay? Uh, and this is, this is a, a beneficial solution for a Butte fire reconstruction. There are people that, you know, they're just waiting for an opportunity. Here's an opportunity. And then, you know, and as you were correct, if you have a building permit for a house, you can live in the RV during construction. There's a lot of people that are involved in, in this component. Uh, the development agencies by and large, um, sheriff's office, local vendors and contractors are really going to have to go out and, and, and sell this idea to, to make this as affordable as possible. Uh, and then there's one agency that, um, that I want to loop into this that isn't mentioned here, and that is Public Works because we do have, we do have road and grading requirements, encroachment requirements. We want to make this as easy as possible. So, um, he just heard my name. We'll be talking soon. Okay, uh, impact on the budget. Cleanups cost money and they cost a lot of money. And we often don't see an ability to recover the cost because the assessment means the value of the property. You know, you're not gonna get the value out of it and recover the cost. And here's some examples. Uh, we cleaned up a site on Rock Creek a couple of years ago. The assessed value of that parcel was seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. We spent twenty-nine thousand between two abatements. Now, to be, to be.
That was one, we did two abatements, that was the cost of one.
Oh, that was the cost of one? Okay. So, so, I don't know if your board is aware, but when we abate a nuisance, we abate the, we do the, the least work possible to correct the violation at hand. So, if it's a dangerous building, but it's only dangerous because the interior is hazardous to the occupants, we board it up. Okay, that's what we do. Even if it's ugly, you know, we board it up. Now, people start breaking into it and setting, "Now we have an attractive nuisance, now we may have to take the building down." So, it's always the bare minimum. So, so we go out, we clean up the garbage that's, that's immediate and immediate hazard. We leave, it's still an attractive nuisance, they dump more garbage, now we had to take it to the next step when we scrub the site. So, you got a good before and after. Eliminates the attractive nuisance, eliminates people wanting to go dump out there because they know it's being watched now. We get a couple of years where maybe nobody touches it, the property could sell, and then it transitions into the hands of somebody who's going to maintain the property. Another good example, similar situation. This is in, uh, on John Eve Trail, West Point. Assessed value is just over half of the cost of the, of the cleanup. RVs, garbage, burned structures, um, it wa- it was, and it was because one nuisance remained to draw attention and everyone used it as a dump site. Now it's cleaned up, everyone knows it's cleaned up, the owners know who's at play, and this problem has gone away. But, um, we have some solutions to try and offset those costs. One of them is we are pursuing a grant now through CalRecycle for cleanups. We have several sites that have been identified as cleanup sites for the acquisition of this grant. We checked on it today. It is still being reviewed, but we're being told it, it is very hopeful that we are going to get that grant. That hopefully will give us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for cleanup of several longstanding sites, uh, that, that need, need attention. So, one other solution, some, uh, some people don't have the money to clean up, they want someone to clean it up, um, but we have a process we have to follow. So, we have to give them a notice of violation, then we have to cite them, then we, then we have to charge them a fine, we have to start the clock on, on penalties, and then if they don't listen, then we have to go to your board, then we have to get an abatement warrant, then we, and so, all of that extra time is expense. When we often get someone saying, "Can you guys just take it for me?" Well, what if we can? So, if we entered into a signed agreement between the property owner and the county to say, "They agree for, the county is going to abate the nuisance and I'm going to be charged that as an assessment on my taxes." It bypasses all of the work to get to the assessment, which saves money and we don't have to charge them as much because we didn't spend six months going through the process. We can just say, "Okay, if you sign here, we will get a contractor, we'll let you know what date we're gonna go clean up this dump site, and, um, you will receive a bill. Once you see the bill, you acknowledge the bill, and then we put it, we assess that on your taxes. They agree to it, we're off to the races." So, I've, I've had this, I've used this in other jurisdictions. It is, it makes it a lot cleaner, especially when it's small cleanups where they just, they just can't afford the extra, you know, a couple thousand dollars. I mean, a thirty-yard roll-off, a full, what's that, charged to us is around seven thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they can't afford that, but if it was on their taxes and they could break that in, it's assessed as real property on their taxes, they could enter into a payment plan with a tax collector possibly. It's worth talking about. So, we want to, I'd throw that idea out as something that we can do. And then, my favorite topic lately, judgments. Well, there's a really, really bad one, especially if it's egregious and we clean it up and they make it dirty again, and we clean it up and they make it dirty again. At some point, they can't maintain that property, it needs to go to someone else who will. If we lean it, similar to a mechanic's lean, for the abatement cost, give them forty-five days to pay on the lean, we can go get a judgment on that unpaid amount. Now, I think it's wise that we set some thresholds for the value because we don't want to go foreclosing on something that only owes two thousand dollars. That, that's absurd. But for someone who's generated forty, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars on cleanups and are egregious, seeking a judgment and selling that property for the judgment, we can get that money back and we can turn that property over to someone who is going to maintain the property. Now, I know this is kind of contentious because now we're, now we're deciding who gets to own property, you could say, uh, but we're also eliminating a longstanding nuisance in a community as well. So, I, I don't want to take the, the, I don't want to take this option off the table. In addition, if this person is a, one of those landlords that have a lot of parcels like this, the judgment is on the person for the value, which means that that's not the only parcel that we could sell to get that money back. A judgment can cross county lines, can cross state lines. We can find a way to encourage this person to comply, and this is a very strong method, granted, but, you know, what's a toolbox without a hammer? So, go ahead.
What about complete abandonment? So, going back to the slide that you had on Rock Creek, they're out of state, they're not coming back. Um, they've completely abandoned the property, so what, how would judgment work in that, in a situation like that?
Or the, the, the property, whether, whether there, if there's a judgment, I'm not certain, Sarah might be able to speak to that, but if they just abandoned the property, I, I just assume it makes the pro- process easier.
So, typically, um, a money judgment, uh, can, can be recorded against a property if the person, you know, you get a money judgment if they don't pay in cash within X amount of time. That can be recorded, but it's gonna sit there as a lien on the property, um, not be something where you would actually, and so it would be an if and when the property sells type of thing, then you would get paid on the judgment.
There's, there's, uh, my understanding is there's another process I want to explore with you, and that is that, that we can, that we can seek.
Happy to explore.
Right. Yeah, it is something that came up several years ago when we're talking about illegal cannabis grows and what you can do to, to pursue them. Um, so I, if, if there's an. So I, if, if there's an interest to, to seek further, now's the time.
I think before we discuss that in public, we should probably delve into the actual law on that before we really decide-
Yeah, and I mean, we're all happy to work with Doug on that.
Right now, is, is there an, an interest to pursue that? So that's, just throwing it on the table.
I would like to learn more about that, that's a pretty heavy hammer.
It is.
But I don't think it should be taken off the table, just to figure out what it's about.
Very good.
It's a big hammer.
So, several departments, once again, involved in that. Sheriff's Office, County Council, tax collector, name of a few, those are primaries. Our current funding as proposed in the 2324 fiscal year, we have some recovery we're anticipating from abatement costs. The AVA fund, we're, we're looking at $58,000 on that for a full-time FTE. Vacant property registration, we don't get a lot of that, so that there's not much revenue coming in there. We really hope to get that $150,000 in liens. Building reserves is really covering funding staff or specific jobs that kind of link to the permit process. The, what we've got posted here is remaining funding that would be taken up by the general fund, is $279,000 roughly. However, based on the direction you guys give me, I intend to come back at the, at the preliminary budget to make recommendations moving into a final budget. I don't know, I, I don't want to count on this number, this was just an idea. Sir?
Doug, how much money do we have tied up in liens for past abatements? We've been doing this for a lot of years. These properties don't turn over, just sort of curious how much money is actually tied up currently?
That's an excellent question. I have, I'm going to have to go back into the records and probably will go back five years and catch everything.
Could we forward that number to all the supervisors when you-
Yes, yes.
Because I think we're all for cleaning things up, I'm just curious what our-
Yeah, we got a little something in every district. So, yeah, if you, do you want it broken down by district or just all-
No, I think overall is good.
Okay, very good. We'll get that information to you. We'll, we'll start pulling it up right after this meeting, we'll get it to you as soon as we can get it all.
Yeah, I mean, this obviously is going to be an ongoing project to work on together, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agreed, I'll get that.
I see, I see your funding using building, building, building department reserves. What, what, does that leave you at zero on your reserves?
No.
Okay. That's just what you're taking out of the reserves as a portion for code compliance?
Well, I, okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to correct my statement because currently, code compliance and building are on the same budget line. In the, the budget I submitted to you is a, a pretty tragic budget because of the, the environment right now, the economic environment, and I am going to recommend several things to modify the budget. The building reserves will be tapped out if I don't make changes. This is a component of that, and so that will have to be, once again, as a result of the discussion we have here, I'm going to bring you some better solutions that include changes in my budget. Part of that is admitting that I, I made an error in merging the code compliance budget with the building department budget. I'm owning that, and I thought that that was going to be a good solution. As it turns out, it was not ideal. And so we, and, and now I understand why it's changed two or three times over the course of history because you get a new building official and they think, this is a great idea. And then the next year they think, wow, that was a bad idea. So at least this time, it'll be on record, so maybe when I retire, the next person comes in and looks at it and doesn't make the same mistake I made. So there will be some changes to try and rectify that. So I, I scrolled for a moment there, so, but I didn't want anybody understanding. When I say building reserves, that isn't tapping it out. There's other factors involved that are tapping out my, my building reserves, and I'll explain that fully June 13th. Okay?
I had a question on the crash recovery and fines. What is a legal, on like, interest rate for payment? So if we were to go into a payment where they're paying the fee over time on an abatement, like the tax assessment, what would the interest, would, can we legally also charge the interest rate? Because in my past experience, we have, or if they miss a payment back to the government on the, on the lien or the abatement process-
They'd have to pay, to pay their taxes, I believe. Yeah, I mean, there, to be certain, it's wrapped up with taxes, there are tax, there are penalties, obviously, for not paying that. I don't believe there's interest, but we can look, we'll look at that.
Yeah, it depends on the, yeah, the, the tax collector.
Slaven would be the expert on that, right? Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a good answer on that.
Okay, because in the past, with the contracts that I've seen come across with code compliance on abatement, they've been, you know, interest rate, or then you can then follow up with a judge, a judgment of lack of payment, and then you take the property. So I just was curious where the county stood on that versus other jurisdictions.
So as it pertains to, to the code compliance action itself, we don't charge interest. We do have, if, if the, if the violation is ongoing, you have a daily fine for that. But that isn't an interest, it, it's a fine for being in violation-
And we don't lean for fines.
Right, right, we can't lean for fines, so it's just our cost of performance service. Okay. So we did focus blight on the tourism corridors because we, we have been listening and, and there is an, an interest to make sure that we encourage tourism in the county. So we've kind of ran that direction with our focus on trying to eliminate blight in the county. It's going to require a lot of cooperation from several different agencies. And I do want to say that Sabrina made a good comment here that beauty's in the eye of the beholder. There are some cultural differences in our county that might be viewed as ugly in other parts of the world, but are just part of our culture. Having five or six tractors spaced out across your field with tall grass growing around them, that isn't abandoned vehicles, that is a art display or, you know, just showing off your antiques. So we fully recognize that there are things out there that could generate, you know, I don't want anybody thinking that we're going to go out there and clean up people's farm equipment or, you know, go after things that, that are cultural staples in a rural environment. We want to look for those things that are attractive nuisances that make a person, when they drive into the county, not want to turn around and drive back out. Okay? So, that being said, what we have here is a map where we just kind of highlighted in red. We didn't give any specific road names, but you can see, you can get an idea of which areas of the main thoroughfares. We currently know there is blight, but we are not a proactive enforcement, we are complaint-driven. So if there's a pile of wrecked cars or there is a, you know, there's garbage piling up or we know that that's a substandard house, if there's no complaints on it, we are not enforcing currently. And that, those are just, like I said, the, the, the major roadways. Okay? And as, as you can tell, it's not the whole corridor, there's just certain little areas where we know, we drive by and we're like, ew, but it's not proactive, so we wait for the complaint.
Just want to, just want to make sure that these are areas that we drive by and understand why we need to take care of these high municipality areas. But that's not at the detriment currently to other projects that might have health and safety issues or other things.
Correct, correct. We will still prioritize them the same way, but we, well, yeah, we'll get into that.
Corridor.
Right.
Because I know that, you know, certainly 26th, we get thousands of visitors every day. Granted, it's not the great grape stomp, but we do have lots of events up in West Point, repair races and other things.
Right, right.
Tourism corridor.
Oh, yeah, we'll dig a little deeper into this.
Doug, could I ask you, would it be possible, I know we've talked about several properties, to get a list of properties in the district so that I'm not calling you on ones that you already know about? And, and if it's possible to know what their number is and how long they've been on the list, that would be great too.
And on, as far as being addressed by code compliance? Is that what, yeah, in the past, we were emailing district supervisors when we issued a notice.
Okay. Historically, I mean, for example, there was a burned-out house that wasn't on the record that, you know, again, I'm getting a lot of complaints, but if they, if you're already aware of it and where it is in the process, I don't want to be calling you again about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we can, we can share that information.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, go as a call, we're happy to help. Go ahead, sir.
I'm looking at that, the red down inside District 5 there, that's not all 26, sir. I mean, we need defined tourism corridors.
Right.
And for clarity, and I think there's one road out in Paloma, we definitely need to get rid of the tractors on the property.
But trust me, that works higher than my priority unless-
All right, so I'm going to skip, I'm going to skip this one and go back to it because it seems that this one's more important. I, we say tourism corridors, we're, okay, there's a lot more roads than the main highways that can be considered tourism corridors, and, and that's something we wanted to throw out to your board as an idea. And we kind of highlighted here because any one of our water features were generating tourism. But then we also have Fourth of July parades, and we have the grape stomp, and we have log, you know, logging jamborees, and we have, and we have, there's a lot of things that every community is doing. So technically, any township center, the main roadway to get there could be considered a tourism corridor for a moving blight. And, and I could, I want to point to one that's near and dear to my heart because I live right down the street from it. If you're in Modesto and you want to get to Railroad Flat, it's going to take you right up Jesus Maria. And you're not going to know it, living in, in, in Modesto, that that is a one-lane road. And you're also going to be very surprised if you look off the side of the road and you see a washing machine full of bullet holes. Okay, so, so I'm just, I'm throwing that out as an example, or, or half of, half a jet ski pushed off the side of the hill. Okay, so if you're riding up a one-lane road, you already are scared to death because you come from a city and are not familiar with that, and then you start seeing this stuff, as soon as you hit any part, any side road, you're probably going to turn around. Okay, so these, these roadways are what we identified as, if you're going to any event in this township, these roads should be added to that list of corridors that we need to clean up. So that was, that's just, like I said, a recommendation, be proactive in these regions. Okay, that's what, that's, that's the recommendation. But what does proactive mean? I'm not talking about going after every type of case, and I'm not talking about going after every type of parcel. What we're talking about is specific case types that have risen to a level where we need to deal with them and represent an attractive nuisance or deterrent to tourism. So in that case, substandard housing, and once again, I'd expand that, you know, substandard housing, dangerous buildings, things that people want to go in and take pictures of. There is a culture out there of people that when they see a wrecked building, they will trespass, they will enter the building, they will take pictures of everything, and they will put themselves in harm's way. I've witnessed that myself. I haven't participated though, you know, let's be clear. But I have, I've, I've seen it. So junk and debris accumulation, abandoned vehicle abatement, do we want to deal with RV situations in these tourism corridors as well? Do we want to give them a priority? These are things that we want to discuss because it is important that if we're going to reduce blight, we can't wait for the complaint. We have to see it, recognize it for what it is and deal with it. And these case types are generally the ones that draw the most attention and make people say, why would someone want to live here? Right? So that's, that's really what we're, the biggest component of what we're asking for is, do you want proactive? Are these reasonable case types to go after? And then, go ahead.
I have a question here, and it kind of goes back to when we were talking, it was brought up, the boat, say, on Highway 12. That's Caltrans easement. So are we, some of these vehicles, are we towing out of Caltrans easement? Do we contact Caltrans and tell them there's an abandoned vehicle in your easement? Can you get rid of it? Can you come clean it up? Because right now, they're going down through their mowing and cutting all through their easements and that-
Mowing around the boat?
Well, they haven't got down that far, but I anticipate within the next, by the end of this week, they're down that far. But they do clean up highways, and, and we should be notifying them at least first to see if they're going to come out and, and tow those vehicles or even get rid of this boat, it's in their easement.
Right.
Before we take, you know, charge of it and get rid of it simply because it's blight. And that's a corridor people go up, it's even on your map, to, to get up here. And so we need to keep it clean and look clean, and we do a pretty good job. But I think we need to contact at least District 10 offices and tell them, hey, you know, can you come and pick up something that's in your easement?
We, yeah, we do contact Caltrans and Public Works when appropriate, and CHP as well. And they refer stuff back to us. The right-of-ways aren't so much an issue on the corridors as the private parcels and the difficulty maintaining some kind of, I don't want to say continuity, but you know, a flow of not blight.
Yeah, we have to have a response should they not have the funding or the staffing to do it. If they say, that's not in our budget for the next six months, are we going to let a boat sit there for six months?
No, and I, I totally agree, but I, I think at least contact them and tell them, hey, this is in your easement, we have complaints from neighbors or, you know. And I think you go back to a presentation earlier today of Clean California with the dump sites that we're going to be doing, the free dump sites or free, that wasn't the proper word anymore, but recycle, that they're aware of. And I, I think if we do contact them, they will at least jump on it, at least right now with the current budget that they're using to clean the road.
Well, this is a good, this is a good test opportunity, so we can, we can contact the investigators on that route, see if he's already contacted, and if not, put a stopwatch on it.
Absolutely, happy to.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay, I have, I have, sorry Doug, I have a question on this. When you're talking about coordinating and working with other departments, one of the concerns I have with that is how do we get through the HOAs and other communities that are regulated by their own rules internally in communities to get rid of some of this stuff? For example, like an abandoned car on an empty lot in Poker Flatt. You know, there seems to be a misunderstanding of those communities not understanding they need to go through the HOAs before the county would step in. So how do we educate those that live in the HOAs to go through that process before hitting this?
Well, what we need to do is, is communicate better to the HOAs first and then provide, and, and, you know, listen to what their needs are, explain the process and, and the layers, and then put it into a process that they can, they can implement so that we can then reach out to the, the individual property owners. So I've, I've done a little bit of that in a couple of, of our HOAs where they've had significant confusion over, you know, hey, when do you step in and what can you do for us? And, and so we sit down at one of their board meetings and we give them a presentation, and we explain what we can do, what they should be, should start with, and then where the line is where we don't have the authority to act so that there's no misunderstanding. And those often are pretty well-attended. And then moving beyond that, just making sure that we have handouts that can communicate effectively to the neighborhood. These are the things that you can call us for and we're happy to do. Here are the things that are within your CCNRs that we can't affect that should go through your HOA board. And so, and that's part of the, the outreach that's on this slide here is just getting out to the public to affected homes and businesses, and then interacting with the HOAs. So I guess if there's an interest for us to proactively reach out to as many HOAs as possible and work out a, a communication system, that's something we can entertain. I see one person nodding.
I don't want more work for you guys, but it just seems like that's one of the most common questions I get in my district. And I just wish I could just divert them to maybe a website where it just breaks down step one, two, and- and I just wish I could just divert them to maybe a website where it just breaks down step one, two, and three. You know what I mean?
So I'm hearing enhance our website.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm just using that as an example, you know, if they're, a, just a flyer that just breaks it down, because that's one of, I get asked that all the time. And I sometimes even have to remember what the steps are and go back and look up on the county website. There's no, like, quick guide on to that. And I don't wanna make it more work, we're either going in, but just something that at least we can use, because we're your PR, you know, somewhat of your messenger, that it makes it easier to get that out.
It's, it's clear that we do need to improve our messaging to the public.
I'm all in favor of improving messaging for the public, but when it comes to HOAs and their CCNRs, I do not want the county going outside and starting to do the work for them to enforce their, their CCNRs.
No, agreed.
And overstepping, I know that's already there, but I just like, I don't want it to get confused in the future, because that does create more work for you. And a lot of times, those HOAs, with their questions, are trying to route in the fact that they want you to do their work for them.
Agreed, agreed, there needs to be a clear, a clear line.
Make every house pink for them, okay?
Garbage cans in by ten AM every day.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so part of, um, there's, once again, a lot of people involved when we're coordinating in tourism corridors. We're gonna need some GIS information. The sheriff's office is gonna be a key element in under, understanding some of the blight concerns, because if there's, if it's concentrated enough, it becomes criminal activity drawn to it. So we're, we're gonna be using them a lot. Environmental management, if there's, if there's anything regarding hazardous waste, or, uh, you know, sewage, um, any type of hazardous scenario, we're gonna be communicating with them and coordinating with them over it. Uh, our fire districts are also very vocal when they see something that is a potential hazard. And I will say, we, we, we led with the Visitors Bureau, because they've, they've been a, uh, very open about, you know, what type of tourism out, is out there, and I, I know it is a priority of your board to try and attract more people to those destinations. So it's gonna be important that, that we link in them, with them in an official capacity and say, okay, guys, where, where are you seeing problems that we might be able to help with? So that's gonna, that, that's gonna be an important.
Economic development should have been on that list, too, that's my fault, sorry about that.
I would imagine that in addition to Visitors Bureau, which of course should be consulted, economic development, probably many other communities, who's, not just, we're not nominating chamber.
Yeah, chamber.
I'm making one the spokesperson for the other, okay?
It's a group effort, or, we all have, I think, the same goal and vision at the end of the day.
Very good. Okay, in summary, and I apologize, I, we did, we did run kinda late on this, but I, we got some very good feedback. To, to summarize, there's some yes or no questions, or at least some, what level do you want this service questions? One, for, for our revision to eight oh six, uh, it, does your board have interest in having us word it to where, when they fail to appeal, we can act without coming back to your board for an abatement? Is this something that you are comfortable with us pursuing?
The, the, now, when we do this, this is the abatement, we're talking about putting an assessment, tax assessment to get repaid, not the greater than.
Uh, no, this is, this is, should they, should we cite them for an activity, and they do not appeal, and they do not remedy it, is your board comfortable with us just acting to abate the nuisance? We will still bring your, the assessment to your board?
The board, yeah, right, the board has to approve any lien or assessment, so this would be to, to perform the abatement, not to recoup the cost in that manner.
Correct.
We, you get our consent packets, our packets on consent, before we can even go get a warrant and do anything. So that would take out that step, we go clean up, and then we come back for the lien.
It makes sense to me, but I think there should be a threshold on costs, because if we, you know, in certain cases, if we aren't realizing a hundred thousand dollar abatement in some radical case, I think that definitely should come to the board in that sense. So like, let's say, you know, that threshold be forty thousand dollars or something like that, in, in those scenarios, where if it's gonna cost over a certain amount, we definitely need to weigh
That's a good point.
The cost to our budget until we realize that.
Is it, well, that, is it fair to say that, that if we stay within our abatement budget, that, that's fair? If we set a hundred fifty thousand, because we're not, we're not gonna be asking your board for four hundred thousand dollars just to take out blight. It's gonna have to be a, this is a year-by-year process, so I may ask for a hundred fifty. You know, if I say I have a hundred fifty thousand dollar budget for the year, and we hit the highest priorities, and we run out after two or three sites, we have taken the biggest problems out of the community. Is that fair to say, or, or do you want us to set a threshold for any abatement? Do we take it to your board and say, this has exceeded fifty thousand, do you want us to pursue it? We, we.
I, if it's like a health and human safety issue, I feel like that really, that you can bet a dollar amount on that, and you need to address it as soon as possible. But on some of the other things, I, I'm, I don't know. I don't wanna make it harder for you guys to get through and do your work, but it's just concerning, because there's so much out there. And then I, I don't want it to end up where you come in six months, you said you've done all this stuff, and you need something, and you're in, we put you, we supported to put you in a position that you're, it's not good, and it ended up in a negative way. And I don't wanna put you in that position.
So would it be fair to say that if we identify that, if the case is related to health and public safety, accumulation of garbage, substandard housing and the like, that we can act? Otherwise, you want us to bring forward anything unrelated to that?
I, I don't think, at least from my point, no. Because, I mean, we've done, how many cases have we all worked on together? And, you know, people just keep playing, playing this game out. They're making progress, but play it upon your goodwill. Oftentimes, they'll go out and weed whack for five minutes and say, I made progress. Technically, they did, but that's not really what the spirit of what we're trying to do. I, I, I mean, I worry that we could blow past the budget really fast in a lot of these projects, but I also think they need to move forward. So I guess I'm, I, I'm okay, initially, I'm okay with you just going and doing what you're proposing. I do share the concerns about, I mean, shoot, we've got a couple sites that we're all aware of, that, I don't know how well they're paid for to get it cleaned up, they're huge.
Okay, so.
But I don't know how to answer that question.
Fair.
I just wanna add one thing, I, I, I agree with them. And I, I'm sure if you run out of money, you're gonna come before the board, and take a four-fifth vote, put more money, or change money from one area to the other anyway. But I, I would like to be, before you do that, advance notice to us, for, if it's in our district, that you're gonna be doing this, they have, you know, they didn't, you know, go through the process, and we're about to do it. At least we're notified of it, and, and we can at least maybe talk to the owner one last time, or whatever. But just, add some, some advance notice to the supervisor if it's in their district.
Right.
And that's something, that's something that we've talked about before. I don't know if we've asked for it to stop, or, you know, you just aren't doing anything in my district? It's like, 'cause I saw the red, I did see the red.
Oh, the red. No, that's absolutely reasonable. That we, and we can figure out at what point that that would happen, so that you would be comfortable with giving them enough notice. But yeah, I think what it sounds like, we'll start sending those.
Or whether, hey, next week, we're going out there, you know, because they didn't appeal it, and we need to get rid of it, clean it up. That's fine, just that we have some advance notice in our district. The rest of it, not bringing it to the board, you guys doing your job, I, I think you guys are doing an excellent job, and I think you could cover it. If you have some issues with funding, again, you'll be coming for the board anyway, and say, hey, you know, we've got this many properties, we've done this, and, and do you want us to do it this year, or wait for the budget next year, or we have it, so.
So, so we'll be using discretion to, to get as many abatements done as possible within the budget, and then should something arise that is beyond the budget, or a single thing rises to the level of, it's gonna torpedo the rest of our efforts to get this done, I should bring that forward to your board for discussion, before I make that decision.
That's what I'm asking for.
I think that would be helpful to staff, too, to not have to make those judgment calls, and leave it to the board, so, I'm all for it.
If I see something ugly, you'll know about it.
The other thing about the advance notice, I do like that, um, comment from Gabe, because sometimes we know these individuals and what is going on. So for example, um, Martin wasn't here yet, but there was a joint, there was an abatement, um, in both districts, and Marita and I, and we both knew that the individuals that had been, had to take over, no longer lived in the state, because it hadn't been passed down to the kids, and they were going through, um, putting the family in a, in a home. And there was just other, there was just a lot going on in the family. So we were able to work with code compliance until the son was able to get back into California to deal with the health and safety issue of what that was. But in the meantime, we did say, you know, go ahead and red flag it, so no one's living in the place. But in terms of the cleanup, they needed to get back to California and, and do that. And now, and that was a success story, where we were able to work with them. But you wouldn't have known that if we hadn't told you what the situation was. So I think each of us know what's going on in our community, and can say, yeah, go for it, or hold on, we just heard this, and, you know, let me call the owner and see what's going on.
That level of communication is, is vital, so I, I expect that we'll be contacting you regularly.
He'll be sick of us.
All right. Okay, so you have enough information on that one?
Thank you.
I think so.
I want to.
Yes. Tenant relocation assistance, do you want us to put that into the code compliance ordinance?
I don't know about the rest of the board members, I'm, I'm a little bit mixed on that, because as you, you point out, what's going on right now with other things, that people play a game and move and do all kinds of things. I, I think if we do it, it has to be really tight control, because you might run into a situation where a tenant deliberately does something to property, just because they know this program exists, and they wanna get the money and move out, and they don't wanna live there anymore because of the landlord, or whatever, and start utilizing it for what it's not intended to be.
No, you're correct, the enforcement, the, the officer moves from determining if there's a violation to, once it's determined, he has to identify who is at fault. And then, and, and that's, and that's new, I mean, we, yeah, it, but, but there is a due process component to that. And it's not, it's not outside of our purview to make that determination, especially when there's multiple people involved in said violation. So it, it's, if your board is, is not feeling this right now, we can move to im, improving our notices to identify when we feel that the tenant is, uh, we can let them know if they qualify or not, and then they can go through the civil process with the landlord, and they can duke it out in, in, in court over that amount. But that means that, now, it, that's the current process, we would just enhance the information we provide to them, and maybe enhance the information to find contacts, to get legal representation, or, or seek other benefits to help them, you know, get through that process.
Yeah, and I understand, I, I completely what you're trying to do here, and I don't disagree with that. I just wanna make sure that we have the, the, the things in place to, to identify, and it's not just being played, and you end up with the same tenant, eight, eight months down the road, doing the same thing, and, you know.
That's a really good point.
Right, well, and the benefit to have, well, the benefit to putting it in the ordinance is that it's there when we need it. If we don't fund it, then we don't use it, but the mechanism is there. Currently, there's zero mechanism. We could decide to do it, and then a budget is bad, and we say, okay, we can't afford to provide that. You know, that, that is within our, our purview to do. So I, we can have it or not, we can put it in and decide not to use it. My, my gut tells me that if there's a mechanism that needs to be enacted in order for us to take advantage of a state requirement, or a state allowance, better to have it in there and not use it than to need it and not have it.
Yeah, and this will come back to us, once it's all done, and then we'd be able to make, you know, talk about and have some changes. We don't like certain things you put in there, we like things and want to add something, whatever, so.
And I can reach out to other jurisdictions and see what, if they've dealt with that issue, do some homework there.
I, I, from my position, I think, I think, I mean, it shows a great heart on behalf of your department, not wanting to hurt people, you know, our victims. Gary Bryant, a good point, people can gain this, and we could also end up, for years in litigation, trying to get money out of some of these, the Caltrans landlords. That's a challenge. What I'd like to see when you guys come back is an understanding with Health and Human Services, as to how their programs can pull in. I understand that they get, they have certain requirements, but if you're gonna get public assistance, nothing's for free. So I know that that might include, you know, things like pets, or other programs that they have available. So I'd like them to be a, a full partner in this, and then we consider this type of program as ultimate, uh, last gasp, just keep someone off the street.
Got it.
But for the most part, if you're in substandard housing, and this county is offering you Project Room Key or other programs to get you into the programs, to help set you up, you should take advantage of those programs first, rather than, I mean, what you guys are offering is something that's extraordinarily heartfelt. We wanna make sure it's got an outcome on it, too.
Very good, thank you.
What those two said, now you have three, let's go on. No, I, I wasn't trying to dismiss anybody else's opinion, I was, I think you, they both covered it pretty well, though.
Very good, thank you. So cost recovery, um, do, how does your board feel about assessing a case management fee if they ask for an extension of time? What would that look like? How much time would trigger a case management fee?
My opinion is, is there's a lot to discuss on this particular item, because what, what, what is the fee? Do we have to go through a fee schedule, to, to set it up?
So, so the current fee we do have is, if it's a substandard housing case, I believe it's a hundred and eighty.
Eight oh four?
Eight oh four, and then for reg, for the lesser, uh, average code violation, it's like four hundred.
Yeah, the lowest one is four sixty-one, and then, I think about six sixty-five for a per, no permit one, maybe. So they range, but yeah, it depends on case type.
So it depends on that, and so, if, if I, you, you give me a violation, and I, you give me thirty days to clean it up, and I say I need another six months, or whatever, then I would pay the four hundred, the two hundred, whatever, for that six months.
Yes.
And then you also had on there that it could be a year.
Well, that was for the, that was for the RV.
That was for the RV.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think, I, I'm not opposed to it. But I, I, I think it could be on a case-by-case situation.
Yeah.
A case-by-case, because another game situation could be coming up here, but, so I'm, I'm not opposed to it, it just has to be dealt with on a case-by-case.
Well, there, there's also legal considerations, so for instance, the garbage site, I need two more months. Well, no, the law says seven days, so we're not gonna give that to you. So there, there's, there's some, there's some legal considerations on every one of these, so you, I, I agree with you, there should be a case-by-case basis.
Because I, I can think of a couple cases in my district, that, um, there was huge amounts of garbage, and the guy was doing stuff to clean it up, but he just needed more of that time, because there was so much there, this had been a few years ago. But eventually, he got, he got it done, so.
And it also would need to be somewhat case-by-case, inasmuch as the fees obviously need to be reflective of the costs incurred by the county in terms of the work that we're having to do.
True.
Fair.
I mean, because we, we do have, you know, there's some, some costs associated with us having to go back out, having to go back out, having to go back out.
Even mailing fees, we have to send everything certified and regular, and that is getting to be about ten bucks, just to send one notice, so, just stuff to consider.
Okay.
I, I, I actually think that this would help motivate people to get things done. I mean, I know one case where your officer's been out there four or five times, and just keep moving a few pieces of material every time they visit. That's a lot, that's gaming us, and wasting taxpayer dollars.
Right.
So, yeah.
Doug, didn't you say that you used this program before successfully? Or did I get that wrong?
The case management fee?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, we haven't, we haven't done that.
Okay.
Okay.
Discretion, I agree.
Discretion. Okay. Very good, thank you. Uh, RV dwelling issue, we have the two items, temporary hardship permits for RVs. Do you want us to work with council and, uh, planning to come up with a solution?
Definitely explore that, please. We, we need to. We need to find out more information on the law with state guidelines, you know, so let's explore that.
And I, I'm sorry, I do have one thing that maybe can be explored, too, is could this be a temporary thing to see how it works before we make it permanent?
Like a pilot program?
A pilot-type program?
Yes.
That crossed my mind.
A year or whatever to see how it's working out, and is it doing good, is it doing what it was supposed to be doing, or is it?
Well, we could, I think that's actually a good idea to move something forward that we could, we could have your board vote on that gives it a sunset date as a trial period because it is going to be something we're doing that would modify zoning ordinance in order to even allow. So having a sunset period to say, we're going to try this, and then we're going to bring it back to your board to see if we can make it permanent, I think that's a very good idea.
I think that would be good, in my opinion, I think.
Okay.
I agree on the sunset. You know, I guess there's the world we want and the world we have, and the world we have has a lot of people in this situation, and we don't have housing.
It's, yeah, it's a tight road block every day doing this job.
So I think if we could find some way to bring these people into compliance, I mean, those are, you know, it's just, it's life and safety, but it is the reality. And so I think that this is a reasonable approach to do it. It's a lot better than coming in and trying to take on every single one and then compounding our housing problems. But I would like everybody to transition, but I'm sure they would, too.
Very well, thank you. Sure.
Um, I'm not sure if the rest of the board would agree with this, but it's a thought because in a lot of other states, you do see that single trailer on a pad with the proper, you know, things for septic and everything out in the middle of a big, big ranch, right? In certain instances, maybe if the boards want to look at it on large pieces of property with huge setbacks under those right conditions, would we consider a single trailer on a pad as long as it was under the permitted process?
We can, we can look into that further. I will say that I have had conversations with the codes and standards section of housing and community development at the state. On the surface, their thought is, because we have a rural dwelling ordinance that allows you to use alternate materials and alternate methods to have a home. When I broached the idea, well, why couldn't you just take an RV, put it on a foundation system, and call it a home? And they said, well, that's not a home, that's an RV. At the state, there's some linear thinking about trigger points, and as soon as it's registered with DOT, even if you take it out of DOT, there's a whole other process, and they really, does not compute to them. So it would be a challenge to make that fly and be able to put that on file with the state as legal, but it's worth looking into. Okay, well, thank you. And pre-approved plans as a means to allow people to temporarily stay on the property? I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up. Okay, very good.
I have one comment on that. I'm for it, I think it's a great idea. I think we need to go also at a future date at metal buildings. Pre-approved plan for metal buildings.
Pre-approved?
Well, just like we have here, if we have, you know, pre-approved plans for a metal building, and then the metal building manufacturers and those engineers know what we have pre-approved, they can design it.
That's a good idea.
For that, because there's a lot of issues right now that continue to get about metal buildings, they're pre-engineered, and it's taking so long and above. But I think if we have a set of pre-approved metal buildings, I think it'd be beneficial for our constituents.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be bringing your board an item related to those structures.
And Doug, I agree with everything you just said. Can we also consider when we look at preview plans, I mean, there's, I mean, I prefer a sticked building because it puts more people to work locally for a long period of time, but I also have a housing crisis.
Right.
Not as many people swinging a hammer as I used to. So can we, are there, when you talk to your vendors, you may want to see if there's anybody who has a manufactured ADU that might fit our standards, if there was such a thing, they could just drop them behind your house.
We have had some discussions regarding alternate material products, like there's an individual out there who is trying to open a business to create storage container homes. So there is some new, there's new codes in place in the residential code that allows an individual to take a storage container without engineering and turn it into a home. And there's potential there, but there's also people willing to convert into manufacturing plants to actually make modular storage container homes that just roll out and bolt together, and you've got a facility, things like that. I've had a brief conversation regarding someone who might be able to do rollout, rollout, stick frame, small buildings for residences, but they would be, this is all very preliminary, but we're thinking forward on that. So let me, let me see if we can goose that a bit and get some more horsepower out of it.
It's, just keep your head down.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Okay, anything else before the tourism component? Okay, so do we want proactive case initiation on the case types that we had mentioned? Substandard housing, especially in, within the tourism corridors, do we want to pursue proactive investigation?
Just so I'm clear, so this, you know, we have the way things have been working, which is complaint-driven. So this would mean Sabrina's driving down the road and she sees something, she can or she has the discretion to choose whether to enforce that or not.
Correct. We're going to go out and, we're going to get in a car, and we're going to go up a tourism corridor, and we're going to be looking for nuisances that are attractive blight-related nuisances.
We're not going to get many invitations to dinner like that.
And just, just to be totally clear, while we are very much complaint-driven, primarily complaint-driven, now, even now, if you happen to be driving somewhere, you see something, we don't have to turn a blind eye because we haven't received a complaint. I think the question here is whether there would be more of an affirmative looking, a switch to that, correct?
Well, let's clarify that further, like, because there's, there's been some longstanding, when I first came on board here, I think, well, it was made very clear that code compliance was complaint-driven and that we weren't going out and looking for trouble. However, however, that being said, in the course of duties, a building inspector, if they see work without permits, they're going to pull over. If there's an obvious health and safety hazard, if there's smoke coming out of a, out of a building, or there's, or there's an electrical panel making sparks or something, we're going, we're going to enforce on that because if there's a risk to the public, we're going to respond.
Correct. I just wanted to make it clear that the fact that we're complaint-driven is out of necessity and custom, not because legally we can't take action if we don't get a complaint or something like that.
Right, right. We're meeting the needs as directed by the board. As soon as your board decides, start going out there and looking for these things and stopping them, then that's what we will do.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I fully understand what your conversation just had, that's the way I've always understood it, you know, from my experience in the past. Not, not that I was mean to call the code compliance issue, but, no. Don't, what you're doing right now, your co-compliance individuals are busy constantly, your budget only goes so far every year, you're apparently spending it all. I don't need to pile more on to you, that you don't need to go find, you don't need to go looking for more work than you're already getting, and you're going to be able to cite those areas that are, you know, the biggest worry to communities, whether they're on tourism corridors and doing this or not.
I agree. And chances are, we have complaints on the big, the big-ticket items anyway.
Okay, very good. No proactive enforcement. Would you like us to add a priority point to our triage for tourism corridors?
We already do have the high-visibility rating, but this would just be an enhancement, like, oh, this is right on the way to Murphy's, or this is right outside of Milk Hill, right, downtown Milk Hill or something.
So, you know, I do like to point, I understood the point system as you said it, like you're saying, high tourism corridors, like instead of one point, it would be two points or something, you know, adding to the overall priority scale. You know, if there's a complaint put in on it and it's something that you've seen on the way of things, I'm fine, I'm fine in that situation. I don't, I think that definitely, these are areas that are important to us overall in the county. It's this definition of tourism corridors.
I think if they start parking RVs in Camp Nine downtown Murphy's.
Well, that's what the other steps we've talked about today, it will make our job easier and we'll be able to be more effective, and we won't, you know, need to be cracked. So, yeah, very good. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, well, yes, thank you very much for your input. We will start moving forward on the items you have directed us to entertain, and we'll be bringing you some more presentations in the near future.
You'll be hearing from us.
Thank you, this is, this is important to our constituents. They ask about this probably more than anything else.
Right here, I appreciate the way you've navigated the proposal on eight dot oh six right now, as opposed to the way I saw it go down last time. It's very good, so I appreciate you navigating it this way. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. We'll give you a couple minutes to scram. You almost, we have public, I'm sorry, public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room? No. Do we have any online?
No, I do not.
None online, okay. We'll close public comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to supervisor announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Poverde.
I would just like to reiterate what Mary Beth said, favorite time of year is the fair, amazing four days, and well done, Chair, for the Ms. Calaveras emceeing.
Oh, thank you. Supervisor Germaine.
Thank you. I attended RCRC board meeting up in Butte County since our last meeting, obviously frog jump and camera meetings, and I would also like to thank Supervisor Toffeney for leading us from the frog jump despite letting the trophy go to the city over there. You know, what you thought, Howard?
Thank you. Supervisor Follendorf.
This Thursday at six o'clock, I'll be having a town hall on the copper community plan. Doug, Gabriel, a couple other staff will be there to attend that. And then Saturday, actually, I think it goes into two districts, District Four and District Three, community will be doing a cleanup on Red Hill Road and out to Camp Nine.
Supervisor Stopper.
I was in the background watching you emcee for a majority of it, you know, but good job, good job, Mr. Toffeney. I appreciate you representing us the way you did. CSEDD met this, this last week. We're moving forward, we've got SURF being implemented through the Sierra Business Council. We also have some broad debt money coming in, and multiple other large sums of money that actually have administrative parts to the grants that are going to be bringing money for, for a certain amount of, you know, staffing for CSEDD. Now, I'm going to bring it forward to that board there, but I'm looking at contract work so we don't have to deal with what we had to deal with in the past with, you know, having employees underneath a JPA that we have to worry about, you know, potential, you know, unfunded liability and those type of things end up costing counties into the future, so, you know. But we do need this good work to be facilitated at the same time, so contractual work seems the way I'm pushing for us to go, and we'll be bringing that in front of that board, so I'm looking out for our interest in Calaveras County into the future, at the same time getting the good work done.
And, yes, I did emcee Ms. Calaveras, and it was a great time, it was great. We had eight contestants, and every one of them were talented and just great young ladies. And I also jumped a frog, yes, I did. I attempted to, but I think it was rigged, the frog that I got jumped backwards.
Did they bring it from Tuamie County?
I was handed a frog, said, here you go, and I jumped the frog that I was given. And so, but I did have a conversation with Rebecca Cowan, and I had a conversation with Jennifer about, since this is became an annual event between the board chair and the mayor of Angels Camp, and I think Amanda and I were the initial ones that did it.
You still owe me lunch.
I was telling them, maybe we should put together a trophy, much like the Fred Hard High School and Calaveras High School have the trophy, yeah. And so maybe we could put together a trophy, and if we win it, we can put it here and they can put it in town hall, at least it'd be some type of competition there for the trophy. So I thought I'd bring it up and maybe we can do that, have a conversation about it later. But it has become an annual event, so, and I still do owe you lunch, but you owe me a couple beers anyway, so. So with that, that's all I have to report. We'll turn it over to our CEO, the great and powerful Teresa Hitchcock.
I can get my mic on. There it goes. Well, I'm happy to report that the budget is ready to be picked up by all board members, so you'll have access to that to go through it, and we'll be meeting with each of you to go through the highlights of the budget and to answer any questions you might have prior to budget hearings.
Thank you very much for getting it done in advanced time. We got like three weeks before, so yes, thank you very much. We have some time to look at it.
It is still very long, although I think that we've done a good job in reducing it a little bit. There's a lot more information in the budget book, I think that you're going to find it very helpful.
Thank you. Ms. County Counsel, nothing? Okay, well, with that said, then we will stand adjourned.